Good evening, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Lakewood, Colorado on February 24th, 2020 at 7:00 PM in council chambers. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Paul?
Here.
Abel?
Here.
Vincent?
Here.
Beto?
Here.
Skilling?
Springsteen?
Here.
Franks?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, well, I'd like to welcome everybody who's taken time out of their evening to join us, or if you've tuning in online or in another form, welcome. If you do have a cellphone, I ask you to please put it on silent, and if you will join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll remain standing for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Will the clerk please read item four?
Item four, presentation, Head Start Annual Training.
All right, I'm going to invite down Sherri Peterson, who is our Head Start Administrator. She's going to give us a presentation. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Get this up a little bit, is that okay?
Yes.
Good evening. How are you guys doing tonight? This cold evening, she's getting the, our first picture up. It's an honor to be with you this evening. In preparation for your review of the year one funding application, I wanted to take this opportunity to do our annual board training, which shows how the Head Start program works within the city system. And if we were not cold enough, there's all the kids out making a snowman. We had a great snow time this year. Each year, I have the opportunity to share out about your overarching responsibilities that the City Council and the mayor provide for our program. As a Head Start grantee, we're required to engage in an annual training, as stated in the Head Start Act of 2007. The City Council serves as a Head Start governing board, and the mayor appoints three City Council representatives to serve on our advisory committee. So here is the two major groups in our Head Start governance. The advisory committee, which is again appointed by the mayor, provides program oversight, and our current members for this year are Sharon Vincent, our chairperson, Karen Harrison, our vice chairperson, Charlie Abel, who's our secretary. And they work in collaboration with our policy council. And our policy council consists of one parent representative from each Head Start classroom, which are five, two early Head Start parents, which are our birth to three program, two community representatives, which currently represent the school district and Metro West housing, and then we do have a past parent, who also is part of that group. So in general, each of these groups work together to make recommendations for our program direction, and where we want to be in our quality improvement. So governing board responsibilities, your overarching is assuming legal and financial responsibility for Head Start, and safeguarding of the federal funds. So we work together to adopt policies to ensure active, independent, informed governance by doing bylaws, assessing and collecting information, doing written standards of conduct, including conflicts of interest and complaints, procedures for selecting our policy council members, which are our families and community members, also setting up our advisory committees, which we have with the city. You also have an opportunity, if we have ever had a chance to grow our grant, to select delegate agencies, or any service agencies that might work with us. You also have the opportunity to establish procedures and criterias for how we choose recruit, select, and enroll children. You also get an opportunity, as you do tonight, to review our funding application and any amendments that we have along with that. You also have an opportunity to review any results, or follow activities from our federal monitoring, which happens three times over the five-year grant process. You also are part of reviewing and approving major policies and procedures, processing and implementing the Head Start grant, major expenditures, looking at our operating budget. You select the auditor, we're involved in that piece with the city, and any actions to correct audit findings. You also receive and use annual, monthly, and periodic reports. The policy council is, again, the parent representatives, and their main responsibility for the Head Start is where are we going as a program? What do we need? Where do we need to do for the community and the children? And so they actually approve and submit to the governing body the activities that they want to do for families, look at program recruitment and selection. They also look at the funding applications and how we want to use our money. They help us with budget planning, including reimbursement and participation as a policy council representative. They help us set up their bylaws. They also do the Head Start program personnel policies and help us make decisions. And also, they help with election procedures. They also would be a part of any delegation or service areas if we ever did any changes on that. They also review and receive annual, monthly, and periodic This is the staff. Management staff have the responsibility of doing the day-to-day operations. This, us, the City of Lakewood employees are responsible for implementing policies that are set up by the governing bodies, developing procedures, also coming to you, providing training and technical assistance on anything that we might provide. We supervise the staff daily, monitor for all those compliance with the federal government, generate and use the annual, monthly, and periodic reports. So we all have these reports to look at together. And then we share reports with policy council and governing body to help make your job easier. I'd just like to show this slide, because it really talks about the shared responsibilities, and kind of the things in working together. So governing body and policy council would take action on things like hiring and terminating the Head Start director and any other lead staff. They would also establish any impasse procedures, while the governing body and management staff provide the legal oversight. We make sure that we're in compliance with all the laws, state, tribal, and local laws. Then together, all three of us, governing body, policy council, and management staff, provide leadership and strategic direction for the whole program, based on the information we collect on annual, on our annual reports, our self-assessment, and also help us to keep us in line with new changes in the program. So again, the Head Start Advisory Committee really does the most of this work in our meetings on a monthly basis. So they help us review and receive any correspondence from the regional office. They help us safeguard those federal funds, make sure that our reports are transparent, they're detailed, give the right information to the right people, and that we ensure that we use the funds for our intended purpose. And we regularly review our budget and expense reports, so when questions come up, we can answer them. So, we are starting off year one of our new five-year grant in July 1st, 2020. So you'll be looking at the funding for that new five-year grant, and we just wanted to kind of talk about the grant overview. Our process will be to serve 110 children, and it's broken out into two age groups. Our Head Start children are preschool children, three to five, and our early Head Start and prenatal moms are birth to three, and of course prenatal moms. And we're going to be at four Head Start locations around the city, and we do have an early Head Start home-based program. Remembering that Head Start and early Head Start families do qualify based on income, and also on age, and pretty much, we serve 100% of poverty level for the families in our program. Our program budget for year one looks like this. We will receive a little over a million three in our federal funding, split between Head Start and early Head Start. And Head Start, because it serves a lot of children, gets the majority of the money, and they're in a center-based classroom. Our non-federal share is also at our 20%, and that is a combination of volunteer time, also donations to our program, use of buildings. All of that comes together to bring us a total program budget a little over a million six for year one. So as we come into our new five years, we have new goals. And so, over the next five years, I'll be sharing out how we accomplish these goals. So I brought you a springtime picture. That way, you could look and see if the kids digging in our new garden. So we're going to really look at these five areas over the next five years. We're going to maximize safety and leverage resources to enhance our learning environments, just like we did over this last five years by having this new garden area, new nature area. So over the next five years, we'll look at opportunities to enhance all of our facilities. Then we're going to develop and enhance program opportunities in families, so that we'll build for the long term. What does it look like? How can we be around for families for a long time to come? Then we'll develop an individualized professional development for our staff, for our families, so that they can work with the children in a way that's appropriate to get them school-ready, and that's what we want for our children and families. Then we're going to maximize the ability to comprehensive, integrative health and wellness services to children, families, and staff, with a new emphasis, and new emphasis, and a complete emphasis on mental health services, for children, for staff, and for families, to have the place that we want them to come and feel safe, and belong, and grow. And then we'll provide multiple opportunities for families to acquire necessary information, knowledge, and skills, and resources to support their family well-being. We have always worked with families on helping them get good nighttime routines, getting children ready for school, maybe making sure they're well-fed, having them ready for the next steps. So these are the big program goals we're looking at for the next five years. So, thank you, and I appreciate your time and support and guidance as we move into this next five years.
Great. We do a wonderful job. We appreciate you and the staff, and all the hard work, and all those kiddos and the families that are engaged. It's a wonderful program, and it's always a highlight when you do bring the kids. It's much more impactful, I know.
I will, at least once this year, I'll bring them.
All right. So, I'm going to ask Counselor Vincent, who's the chair, if she has any comments, or...
Um, not to offend anybody, but I think this is my favorite committee to sit on, okay? It's so nice, and it's so wonderful what happens with this committee. And I think whether you served on it before, you currently serve on it, it's incredible, I think, to all of us, what you see when these kids initially start, and where they are on the educational spectrum, I guess I would call it, and where they end up when they graduate into kindergarten. It's incredible. I mean, these kids double or triple their reading skills, their math skills, their social skills. So it's a great program, and I can't imagine that you won't have a problem passing the resolution for funding. So, thank you very much for all the work you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing. You do make a difference in this community in a huge way. Did I hear you to say, because I looked at the screen again, that you are thinking and working in terms of mental health issues as well?
Yes.
That's awesome. I really appreciate that. Too often, young children have mental health problems, and they're not recognized until they're much older. Thank you. That's great.
Welcome.
Any other comments or questions? All right, well, thank you so much. We appreciate. We look forward to the follow-up setter to come. All right.
All right.
Keep up the good work. So, before I go into general public comment, I just want to remind council, if you have an opportunity, only seven of the 11 have read the online comments for tonight's second reading, so if that is an opportunity for you to engage on that, please do so. Okay, so, next up is public comment. This is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the city council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council. I ask that all in attendance observe the decorum in the city council chambers, and refrain from applause or audible support or discord with the speaker. I will read those names from the public comment roster, and ask that you line up on both sides. Usually, if we have a bunch and there's not. If you have not yet signed up to speak, I ask that you do so now, please. And then, as we get to the end, if you hadn't signed up, please stop by the clerks and sign up there. I will ask, there's something I've slacked a little bit. Please state your name when you come to the podium. It's becoming harder for our folks who do our minutes to, if they can't read the name and you don't state your name, we don't know who you are. So please state your name when you come down. And first up, I have a pooling, Mr. Growth, and you have three people here with you, Mario, Gwen Lin, and Linda. All right, come on down. Welcome.
I've waited a long time, many nights to get here.
All right, we're glad you're here.
There's a monkey on my back, and I have to get rid of it.
You can speak right here, Mr. Growth. You can speak right here, and then here's the mouse.
Okay. My name is Peter Growth. I've lived in Green Mountain since 1969. I've dripped... My name is Peter Growth. I've lived in Green Mountain since 1969. I commuted over West Cedar Avenue. I've watched it. I've helped it, but I can't go any further. I need some help. It's a serious matter, but I want to tell you, when we go antelope hunting in Wyoming, my wife has to check for ticks, me, and she can't find my product expiration date. But I know I'm going to die soon, and I want to get this over, and a few other things. The problem is getting worse. I'm going to describe one problem, and I'm going to come back and describe some other problem. The city's going too fast. We are developing a syndrome. It's not my problem, but I'm going to make this your problem. Excuse me if I strong-arm you at the end. Does it say, "I'm leaving this planet"?
If you switch your mic.
There, okay. Up. That better? Okay, let's start. West Cedar Avenue is booby-trapped and always has been. It's claimed at least one life that I know of, and there's been a number of accidents. And something occurred in September that nobody has seen, or nobody thinks it's their job to correct. I'm going to fly through these. At the end, I'll give you a written report with more details, but I think you can see my exasperation and my fears. This is the location. It's a curve on West Cedar at 13,050. There are three apartment complexes. We're concerned with the one centered here, and the one just to the north. Let me start. You up the hill, when you go up the hill going westbound, it's a semi-blind hill, and you don't know that that road curves, and you don't see the unmaintained curb sign. Let's go back to 1986. This is when the apartments were built. There's a pole there. That pole was hit half a dozen times. And finally, cars started flying over the road, which is separated from this pit parking lot, and they fall down seven or eight feet. That's an awful bad roll, a bad fault if the car rolls. And since you're going around the curve, it's going to roll. The latest victim, which was a death, went through the fence where the bicycles are. I requested a guardrail, you put there, a written request, and one was installed, but they installed it at the wrong place. I strongly suspect that the apartment owners did not want a guardrail on their front line, so they put it here, at the bottom of a hill where Alkire meets Cedar. so they put it here, at the bottom of a hill where Al-Khair meets Cedar. That didn't last very long. It got beat to smithereens, so they took it away. And Lakewood decided we needed something there, so they planted trees. Most of the trees have been culled by vehicles. The original developer put a berm of gravel and sand at the bottom of the hill so the cars would slide over and get high-bottom and stop. You don't need to put something in a vehicle's way when there's a dangerous situation. Whoops. This is what it looks like in the wintertime going around that curve. You can partially see the curb sign. When this tree really gets snow-loaded, you can't see it at all. We need some reflective signs, as you see in the lower left, around the curve. Remember, it's a blind hill. You don't see this until it's too late, and you shouldn't put your brakes on when you enter a curve. Anyway, this is where the car went over. You can see the memorial flowers. They hit that area, and now there's a memorial across the road. We don't need this to continue. In September, the Union Square apartment had their driveways repaved. And he's not doing what you think he's doing. What they did was now, finally, the second time, they completely filled the gutter. They dammed it. And they actually brought the driveway apron out into the street. If it wasn't dammed, you could see where the curve would go, and the parking lot apron should have been to the right. So they've infringed on public land. They did it without a permit. This causes water to flow along in the street. And how bad does it get? Well, let's look at this. You can see that the green is where it would flow, the pink is where it now does flow. Look at the amount of parking lot square footage. Using Google, I calculated 13,000 and 2,000 for the second parking lot. But I suspect all the roof drainage adds to that watershed. And when it rains, it's covering the street, right where you don't want to put a car into a hydroplaning situation. So it flows across the street and down the street. Okay? This is what it looks like in the wintertime. All that water freezes. Now you have icy conditions. And then lately, this super brilliant LED light was put up. I hope you look at the pros and cons of these electric lights. They're put in the wrong place, and they allow this to happen because the eye cannot rebound from pupil shrinkage. It's called a combination. It takes six seconds after you enter a gray area before you can see again. Okay. So I have 17 points here. They're in the report. I'd like the city to serve notice of non-conformity in an apartment and demand immediate restoration of drainage in the ditch, have some properly placed hazard signs around the curve, and try to get a guardrail there, and look at replacing that streetlight. In general, I'd like the city to better work interdepartmentally by establishing an awareness There are apps out there, and you could probably get Red Rock Students to build one for you. But just like McDonald's now, you can poke what department to send it to, take a picture and poke it, and then have it filtered so that departments know what's going on. And then employ a safety person who's globally holistically oriented. I grew up with an engineer father, and he never thought that way. So, in conclusion, I hope you can help me. I will do this. If you, if the attorney notifies the department office and you start doing something and I can see, I will not give this report for 30 days. I now give you. But after 30 days, all I have to do, and I might, after 30 days, I would consider it negligence, and I'll give it to the real strong arm, Frank Azar. All right. So I hope I can rely on you, Mayor Paul, to take the monkey off my back, will you? Can I give you the monkey?
That'd be nice. Thank you. That'd be the first time. Appreciate that.
I can now sleep now. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you for making this serious subject a little bit more fun. Since Counselor Skilling lives right there, we'll go ahead and place that monkey right on his chair. Thank you. Okay, Lynn Judson?
I have a question. Mine is concerning the discussion we have on small cells.
Please.
Right now, okay. I don't know if it's not a gender, it's a gender.
Good evening, City Council. I appreciate all of your work. I just wanted to make a few points. I thought that we reached a good conclusion last time about having city council have time and the public have time to study the issue of 5G towers, and especially in neighborhoods and school areas in Lakewood. I think it's a complicated issue, and we have, we would like an opportunity for the public to weigh in as well as industry. The wireless industry has had a chance to weigh in on February 10th, and I think it's only fair that the public should also have an opportunity to weigh in on this issue and to be educated as well. I know you have a huge amount of material to go through in your packets, and I appreciate you doing that. And we have a workshop set up for March 21st and would like an opportunity to have the public have a chance to weigh in. We'd also like to have this continued to a time when all the city council members are present and not going to Washington, D.C., or hopefully Counselor Skilling could also be back after his, the breakage of his leg. So I'd like to keep it the way it is, have it postponed till April 27th, to be fair to everyone and have everyone have some input on this important issue. Then, just a few small points. I was able to get a copy of the rewrite of the Lakewood zoning ordinance code for wireless. Everything in red is, of course, a rewrite, and it's very extensive. It's probably, looks to me like about three-quarters of the code, so that's a huge amount of material. So I think we need time to have everyone on council look at that and have the public weigh in. And the other thing is, do we have any, if applicants have applied after August 10th of 2019, so last August, if it's a new application, they're required now to have a NEPA environmental review. And that's because of a lawsuit brought by the National Resource Defense Council last summer against the FCC. The FCC had waived any environmental reviews. Now it's required. And I'm asking if the applicants, we should not, under federal law, we should not approve applicants unless they have an environmental review. Also, under state law, 17-1193, it gives local governments such as Lakewood police power, in quotes, to protect residents' property values. So we can rely on, if we say we are doing that and we do it, right now, the law is not for health reasons but for aesthetic reasons, we are definitely within the law to do that. And several localities and cities in Colorado have required a 250-foot setback for small-cell antenna in their neighborhoods. So something concrete that we should do, okay? And then that makes it safer for schools and for people who are, everyone's susceptible, but some people are especially susceptible and could sue under, they could sue Lakewood under the ADA or other laws. So we have to have this 250-foot setback in residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and members of the council. My name is Andrew Cole. I'm here on behalf of Verizon Wireless and to comment on the pending wireless ordinance. I just want to state that our overall goal is to come to an agreement, to work with the city and find a balanced approach to be able to comply with local, state, and federal law and allow wireless providers to deploy the facilities that are in demand by your citizens. This is, we know this is going to require compromise on both sides. The pending ordinance is one that city staff and the wireless industry have worked together to achieve this goal, this balanced goal. We understand that compromises were made on both sides in that process. And most importantly, I just want to say that we, from Verizon, are willing to do whatever we need to continue to work with the city, the council, to provide any education. We're willing to work with the public to provide education, answer questions, to make sure that folks understand what our goals are and the demands that we are looking to meet. We respectfully request, we submitted a letter from under our legal counsel that lays out some of the points in detail, and respectfully request that you revoke the moratorium as we continue to work through these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Carol, and you've pooled your time, and that exhausts the roster, so if you wish to speak after Ms. Baum, please come down and sign up now. Thank you.
Mayor and city councilors. My name is Carol Baum, and I would like to take this opportunity, I don't know if you got your little invitations to the public forum or yet? Did you? Okay. So I just wanted to, if you hadn't read it yet, it's on March the 21st from 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. at the Lakewood Cultural Center, and we have Dr. Timothy Sheckley presenting along with, there's going to be another person, and we don't know who that is yet because we haven't invited them yet, but we're working on that. So this will be a great opportunity for you to get more information and have your, any questions answered, and also the public, too, will be able to, you know, get their questions answered and to learn more about this topic. And in doing this, it will help you to make better decisions on this complex issue by April the 27th. So we hope that you'll be able to come to that. We don't want to rush through this important issue, and we need to hear, you know, stuff from both, you know, others' perspectives, not just Ken Philman and the wireless industry, but also other experts that need to weigh in, too. I would also like to bring up another issue I have today. I contacted the city manager's office, and I needed an email for the city manager, and the person I spoke to said that there wasn't one for her and that she, so then she asked if she could help me, and I then proceeded to ask if the city manager sets the agenda and the order in which the agenda, the different things are, what order they're in. She said the city clerk does that, so I thanked her and hung up. And then a little bit later in the day, I called the city clerk and asked to talk to Michelle, and she was busy, so I proceeded to talk to the receptionist and asked her if Michelle does the agenda and the order in which issues are addressed. She didn't know, so she referred me to another woman who told me that the city manager does this. I felt like I was getting the runaround and that the people who work in the city should know who does the agenda and the order of the agenda. Since everybody else seems to be confused of who does the agenda, I would like to know, Mayor Paul, who sets the agenda and the order in which items are addressed. It is so important to me and others, this is on a different topic, to hear both sides of an issue, and we're grateful that you allowed Dr. Timothy Sheckley come to share some information at the February 10th city council meeting. It added greatly to the conversation on this subject, and I just wondered if Dr. Sheckley was able to get reimbursed for the time he spent here. The last item I wish to address is why item 14 is on the agenda tonight. It is about a discussion and possible further action on small cell wireless facility sightings. There was a vote taken on February the 10th at the last city council meeting to take a two-month pause, which would end on April 27th, in which you would be learning and talking to other experts, residents, staff about the best ideas, so changes to ordinances and resolutions could be made to protect the residents in this, in that city. How many, I just want to know how many of you council members were consulted before this change was made? Just by raise of hands. How many of you were consulted before the change was made? How did this consensus change without consulting council? I would like to see in writing what the rules are relating to setting agendas, and I would appreciate answers to all these questions I have asked tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Mallard?
Joan Poston?
Hello, City Council. I am a community activist, and my name is Joan Poston, and I have not been here before the council in this year. The last time I came was to talk about how this council is perceived on Facebook, and I read something about what was going on with White Fence Farm. And after that, I said, "I'm not coming back to speak to city council for a while because I don't feel like things get heard." And then I went to a Ward 3 meeting, and I heard that you all had said that you were going to not talk about the cell question until April. And I looked at my calendar, and I said, "Gee, this is February." And I started thinking about things, and I said, "You know, in this nation right now, our people have a viewpoint of Congress. Only 37% of the people think Congress can be trusted." And I'm sitting here going, "Maybe I should do a poll to see how many people trust the council in Lakewood," because I haven't been coming because I don't think people are hearing. When you say that we're not going to do something, and we're not going to think about something, and we're going to take a pause, and we're not going to do anything until April, and then I hear somehow we're talking about it again, and it's February, I'm just confused. I once talked to council... I once talked to Councilman Abel about city council and how it operates and stuff, and he told me that there are two kinds of models here in Colorado. One of them is city council-heavy, and the other one, well, mayorial, that's it, right? Mayorial. And the other one is manager-heavy, and that when Lakewood chose, they chose the manager-heavy I just want you all to rethink how this looks, and maybe I'll come back in three months. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike Muller?
Good evening, welcome. Hi, guys. Been a long time. I really wasn't going to say anything until I found out you guys changed the schedule again and put it on the wireless early. And the last time this, this kind of thing happened was when we pushed the trash deal through, all of a sudden. And then all of a sudden, we find out the mayor got a $1,000 donation. Oh, maybe that's why he got on there. But I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, you know, Tim Sheckle brought up some very good points. He talked to each one of you, and you could learn a lot from him. You can also learn a lot from Ken Philman. But the problem is, why did the mayor insist on paying thousands and thousands of dollars for Ken Philman, but he wouldn't bet up a dime for the other guy? Hmm, boy, does that stink. Sort of like the trash deal. Now, I have fiber optic running through my backyard, and I'd much rather have fiber optic because it's faster, and it's safer, and it's cleaner. But no, we got Verizon, all hot and heavy about suing us if we don't do this, and doing this, and doing this, and all this other crap. Well, I don't care about Verizon. I want this studied. I want you guys to be intelligent about it. I want your decisions to be intelligent. I don't want this crammed up somebody's orifice because the mayor wants it through. This should not be on the ballot, or be on, even spoke about until the 27th. And I want all of you guys to get smart about it, because this is very dangerous stuff we're talking about. Very dangerous. And I prefer the fiber optic, and I can't see why that isn't even brought up yet. Why do we have to have these stupid antennas every 250 feet around our homes? That's not right. It's not right at all. And especially from a council that is uneducated about the whole situation. What do you think? Doesn't that make sense to be educated before you vote on something that could damage people? Damage neighborhoods? Damage schools? Don't you think? What do you think? Would you rather be educated or just follow the, follow the king here? All hail the king. Mr. Paul, put it back to April, where it belongs. I don't know why you got this pushed up ahead. I don't know why Verizon has so much power over you, but I got a very good idea, and it stinks. Sort of like the trash deal.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're going to close public comment. Looks like there might be one more coming down.
Richard Bennett?
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak under general public comment? If you come over and see the clerk, please. And we'll have you up after Mr. Bennett. Thank you. Good evening.
Good to meet you all finally. I have some overheads. Can I show those?
Sure.
Yeah, I wanted to talk about the small cells item.
Please, if you could use the microphone, it'd be great. We'll turn on the overhead. Thank you.
Talking to the machine. So I thought I'd let you know what I want. I want small cells in Lakewood. Just to let you know a little bit about my background, I was one of the people at the FCC that wrote the model municipal code. So if anyone wants to beat up on the FCC over that, you know, here I am. I've also testified before Congress three times and done some other stuff. The, most recently, I was quoted by the Pew Research Center, talking about the hazards that the internet disinformation has caused to democracy. And it's the first time I've been to a council meeting, but I have watched several of them on the webcast, including the February 10th meeting. I was especially disappointed that in that meeting, nobody talked about the benefits of 5G. Why do we want to do this? Because if you don't really consider the benefit side of it, the costs of delay are nothing. But in fact, you know, this is a technology that my colleagues in the engineering community have been working on for close to 10 years. It's a complete reorganization of the wireless network that offers considerable benefits to the public, and the sooner we get the infrastructure built for it, the sooner we can start to enjoy the benefits. It's literally going to save lives. So the health concerns that were brought up by some people who I think are poorly informed last time have to be seen in the context of the healthcare improvements, the reduction in automobile fatalities, and the other quality-of-life benefits that come from it. Like any technology that is related to the internet, it's not free of hazards, and it certainly, there's a risk-reward calculation to be made about it. Some businesses do have suffered because of the internet. Some occupations have been displaced, especially journalism, as I'm sure Councilor Abel could tell us. I think the primary concerns, though, about 5G at this point, because there's so many good safety studies that have been done, so much good engineering work, visual clutter is probably your biggest issue at the municipal level. Now, like any new technology, 5G has stoked a conspiracy theorist movement.
Your time's up. Your time's up, sir. Three minutes goes fast.
Okay.
If you, if you want to, if you want to email that to council, it'd be...
I'd be happy to. There isn't a health problem. That's my main point.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Dan Walters?
Good evening.
Hi. Just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. The only thing I want to talk about is the traffic on Kipling going northbound. Usually, there's a lot of times I go to work between 5:00 and 5:30 in the morning, and going northbound, traffic is so fast between, I want to say Morrison and Sixth Avenue. And there are so many times where people are just, you know, flying by at 50, 55 miles an hour. So if we can get maybe some police officers out on that grassy median out there to maybe kind of let people know, it's like, hey, we're kind of watching you guys speed down this road, because it's very unsafe. I mean, it doesn't matter if it's, you know, in the summertime where it's dry, or in the wintertime where it's snowing or rainy, it just doesn't matter. People just don't seem to slow down on that road. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. All right, that exhausts the public comment roster. I want to thank everybody for participating. I'll quickly try to address a couple of those. We'll start with speeding. Certainly an issue throughout the, throughout the community and throughout the metro area. And if you see the billboards, we're really trying to get the word out and trying to do more enforcement. 24 people died on Lakewood roads last year, which is just unbelievable. And so we appreciate that. I know our Lakewood Advisory Commission is looking at different opportunities as well, and there's a lot of different programs. Social media, we're regularly polling over people doing over 100 miles an hour on our roads. So I think we heard from our chief judge and from our police department, there's really a lack of tolerance for it anymore, but it is a matter of resources and getting people out. So we can put that on our list of areas, just don't get caught speeding on Kipling because they might be out there. And that goes back to, Mr. Groth will certainly make sure that we have all your information. And there is a one-stop shop called Request Lakewood where you can go, you can take pictures, you can submit it, it'll go right to the department, and you'll make sure that that happens. So it's Request Lakewood, you can either do it via the internet, or there's an app, and you can take a picture and send it. And so we'll circle back if, with more conversation if you'd like to after that, and make sure we go there. I think there was some confusion. I'm pretty sure our clerk, as well as our folks, tried to answer the questions the best they can. The agenda setting is in our policies and procedures, and the main question was, how did this come to be? Our legal counsel has an obligation when they see something or have new information and they need to inform this council. That's their job to make sure that they have that ability to set that aside. Now, if council wants to discuss that or not, that's the council's prerogative, but it's more important to make sure that that is put out on the agenda for any potential discussion. And I think, again, that's very important. That's our legal counsel's job, to make sure that we have those opportunities. And council was notified with a suggestion to leave this as a placeholder in a memo that was sent out to all the city council by our city attorney, and comprised both with outside counsel and our city attorney. And then the last thing I would leave, we are a city manager form of government. It is by charter, which is the people, and if the people want to see that change to what they would call a strong mayor, such as Denver, Carl Springs, or Pueblo, that is within the people. But I would say this form of government is certainly well-served and used by probably 98% of the local governments in Colorado. So with that, Ms. Hodson, we will go to your report.
Great, thank you. Okay, a couple of things.
Can I interrupt? I'm sorry. Just one last thing. The agenda item that was put on for, by our legal department has nothing to do with the larger conversation of 5G, which is still in April. And this subject has been postponed twice in order for you to take on all the other issues that you've talked about, to make sure that you have those conversations, to make sure council gets that feedback. This has something to do with something, a legal portion of what happened, and doesn't have to do with the larger ordinance, per se. Ms. Hodson, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Just a couple of things. First of all, the finance director recruitment is underway. We've, we've seen a lot of really good applicants, so we'll let you know when that process is complete. On another note, on February 13th, we opened the registration for our summer camp programs, and in one day, we got 2,000 participants in one day. I think that might be a record. And remember, our summer camps include history, arts, science, sports and recreation, golf, and family services day camps. So in one day, we got 2,000 participants. On another note, pretty soon, like imminently, you're going to see banners along Wadsworth affixed to the Taylor property, which, as you know, is not its final name, that they'll be along Wadsworth. The whole idea is to encourage people to visit the project page for updates, to be able to view the property itself, and to register to be emailed for any updates. So that will be on lakewood.org/TaylorProject. Again, that's not the permanent name, but that's the name we're calling it in the interim. So that's good news, that's exciting. People can start to give us their feedback as it relates to this particular site. The city clerk is working with our IT department, and they're excited to say, we're almost ready to demo our new campaign finance reporting system. And it's supposed to be much easier to use, much more user-friendly. So we're just about to launch it to demo it, and then we'll bring that out. So I know Michelle's just excited about that. A couple of things for your calendars, please, please take note. Next week, on March 2nd at 6 o'clock PM, this is a special meeting. You will go into executive session, and you will be conducting the interviews for the municipal judge. It will probably take the majority of the evening, we're thinking 6:00 to 9:00, and it may take even longer. At this point, we have three very highly qualified candidates that you will be interviewing and making a decision on, our next municipal judge. So 6:00 on March 2nd. Another date I'd like for you to please make note of is April 6th, April 6th at 5:00 PM. We will have our follow-up meeting to the council planning session that was held February 1st. The follow-up meeting is April 6th. We tried to schedule it in March, but we had some conflicts getting Heather to be able to facilitate it. And she's able to come and has committed to April 6th. On that evening, we're going to start at 5:00 PM up in the, in the cabinet room, and we'll go through all of the priorities that you established on February 1st, and we'll add more detail to those. You had instructed staff to go, go forward and to put some details together. So you'll be able to look at that on April 6th. And then, right after that, is a 7:00 study session, and that's when the Metro Districts meeting got rescheduled. Remember, we had a council due to weather? So that's going to be a happening night, April 6th, 5:00, first of all, is a follow-up to the workshop, I mean, to the planning session, and then 7:00 is the rescheduled Metro Districts meeting. I know a lot of your constituents are interested in the conversation around Metro Districts, so please help get the word out, and we'll post it in our usual places. One more date for you, please. March 5th at 7:30 in the morning. 7:30 in the morning is our quarterly county commissioner's breakfast. March 5th, it's over in the county buildings, and we will be doing the rollout of the Jeffco Comprehensive Count, of the homeless count that was conducted in August. The report is almost complete, it's in draft form, and it'll be finalized by then, and our own staff, the county Sergeant Alish and Amy Dicknick, will be there to answer questions. So I encourage you all to be there. This will be a meeting of high interest for a lot of people, and we'd sure love to see all of you there. If you'd RSVP through Donna Rep, that'd be helpful, so we can indicate to the county who's coming and whoever's sponsoring it, one of the cities, we'll make sure to order enough food. So again, that's March 5th at 7:30 in the morning. Please try to be there if you can. The meetings are usually downstairs, I can't remember what that room is called, but it's in the usual place, downstairs in the county building. We'll have more detail if you want, just give me a ring. You know, and I wanted to give you a quick update as well on the inmate population directive that we heard because of the ballot question at the county that did not pass. The sheriff had told us that we would go into what's called Step 1, which would be an early release program, and that is underway. Our police department has issued an internal document to guide the officers as it relates to the impacts that are happening in the sheriff's department. And yes, these are of serious concern for our police department. Just a reminder, what the Phase 1 early release is, essentially, you know that the sheriff has closed the seventh floor of the jail, the top floor, that's due to a lack of personnel and ability to hire employees. They've also initiated an early release of the inmates, an early release program. And also, there's a limitation to the allocations of bed space for the Lakewood, for our Lakewood program. Every city is subjected to, every city in the county is subjected to the same situation. My hope is that maybe there's a conversation, or there may be a conversation, along these lines at the commissioners' meeting as well. So that might be interesting for you, too. I had sent the directive that came from the sheriff, I had sent that to you shortly after that was issued, and I'm happy to send that again if you're interested. So just let me know if you want to see that again, I can dig that up. It was initially sent with the three different steps that the... It was initially sent with the three different steps that the sheriff was going to initiate, and remember, we're only at Step 1 right now. That was initiated December 6th, 2019. So, if you'd like to see that again, I'm happy to send it to you. So, with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda has been made to expedite council action. It contains both resolutions and first reading ordinances. Resolutions are items of a routine nature. Members of the public have an opportunity and moment to comment on any of the proposed resolutions. First reading ordinances appear on the agenda only for the purposes of setting future public hearing dates and ordering the newspaper publication of the proposed ordinance. No public comments will be heard this evening on first reading ordinances. The public will have the opportunity to comment on the proposed ordinances during the scheduled public hearing on the date set tonight by council. Any council member may request an item on the consent agenda and be removed for separate discussion and action. Under General Business, will the clerk please read the consent agenda?
The consent agenda consists of Items 7 through 10 inclusive. Item 7, Resolution 2020-11, endorsing the 2020-2021 Head Start Grant Application for the Purpose of Submitting a Request to the Federal Government for Grant Funds Available to Provide Head Start and Early Head Start Programs. Item 8, Ordinance O-2020-6, disconnecting from the City of Lakewood, Colorado, certain property addressed as 14013 West Quincy Avenue, and located in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 7, Township 5 South, Range 69 West of the 6th Principal Meridian, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado. Item 9, approving minutes of city council meetings. City Council Meeting, October 28, 2019. City Council Meeting, December 9, 2019. Item 10, accepting minutes of the boards and commissions. Planning Commission Meeting, September 4, 2019. Planning Commission Meeting, September 25, 2019. Planning Commission Meeting, October 16, 2019.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing on the consent agenda, which was really just Resolution 2020-11. Nobody's signed up to speak, seeing that I'll close public comment, and ask Counselor Abel to please make a motion.
Mayor Paul, I move for approval of the council minutes for acceptance of the minutes of boards and commissions. Order all ordinances introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post, with public hearings set for date included in the ordinance, and for adoption of resolutions, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second.
Great. We have a motion of second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes. Passes 10 ayes, zero nays. Clerk, please read Item 11.
Item 11, Ordinance O-2020-4, amending Section 3.04.090A of the Lakewood Municipal Code to allow construction projects to be awarded up to $10,000 without competitive quotes.
Okay. I will now open the public hearing on Ordinance 2020-4, and ask Mr. Adrian Stanciu to come down. He's with our Property and Purchasing Division Manager. Good evening.
Good evening. Again, Adrian Stanciu, Property and Purchasing Division Manager. Okay, here we go.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. Again, Adrian Stanciu, Property and Purchasing Division Manager. This is actually great timing, just in a few days, next month in March, is National Procurement Month, and we usually have a proclamation from the governor, recognizing the importance of procurement and the public process. So, thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm here to talk to you about our purchasing policies, which are codified in the Lakewood Municipal Code. We last updated them in May of 2012, so just about eight years ago. And they can be summarized as, "To procure materials, supplies, and services at the best value to the city." And it is important to note that it is about value, not just about low cost. We do check references, look at past performances, safety records, other relevant factors, all in order to get the best possible value for the city. Now, the city does not have a small or minority business set aside, but we do comply with any such requirements when there are federal fund grants in play. We do also have a section in the code that states that if all other factors are equal, local businesses are to be awarded. Staff does make a concerted effort across the board to reach out to small and local businesses whenever possible, especially with lower-cost projects, as we'll be discussing here tonight. Additionally, in the 2012 rewrite, we added a green procurement section, which encourages sustainability, where cost and other factors are not prohibitive. We're going to focus in on the bid requirements of the purchasing policies, and they can basically be summarized as follows. Purchases greater than $50,000 require a formal bid or RFP process. RFPs, for those who don't know, request for proposals, those are where cost is not the primary factor. That section of the code is not changing at all. The next section is purchases between $5,000 and $50,000, and for those, three quotes are required. Quotes are a less formal process, and they're typically faster than a full-blown RFP or bid. Tonight, we're going to be looking specifically at that $5,000 threshold, and as it relates to construction projects. Again, the code was rewritten in 2012, eight years ago. In these past eight years, overall general inflation has actually been very modest. We can all feel pretty minor effects when we go to the gas pump, the grocery store, our typical purchases. Unfortunately, construction costs have escalated at three to four times the rate of general inflation. There are a number of indexes out there that track these costs nationally. This happens to be one of them, that shows a 42% increase in construction costs. Again, on a national level, there are other indexes that track them locally, and we can see that in the Denver area alone, the costs have risen actually 3% to 4% faster than the national level. And this really should not be any surprise, as we look around our community and see all the construction that's happening out there. So, again, tonight, we're talking about construction services, specifically projects under $10,000. These are typically managed by our Community Resources Department, and involve work, such as is listed here before you, the wood floors that are recenters, carpeting, painting, wall reconfigurations, concrete work, roofs, HVAC, plumbing, and so forth. These projects are typically performed by small-to-medium-sized contractors, and most of them are in or near Lakewood. Large contractors do not even want to touch these projects, and unless it's a very specialized trade, we do not attract businesses from outside the metro area. Now, whereas most products and commodities can be easily priced via email or by just looking on a vendor's website, construction services are unique. They require detailed plans, specifications, and a site visit. Each construction project is uniquely connected to the site and to the surrounding infrastructure. So, in addition to reviewing specifications, contractors have to physically come out on site before they can even provide us with a quote. The resources spent on producing these quotes can equate to 5% to 10% of the cost of a small project. And that's a good chunk of the profit margin for a small contractor. So, unfortunately, we've got fewer contractors willing to invest the resources necessary to provide the quotes, and we're getting less competition. At the same time, we're actually working harder to get less competition. Staff is spending considerably more time finding and convincing contractors to participate, and this results in delays for our much-needed projects. We're getting frequent no responses, or if they're more polite, they might come back and say, "Thank you, but we're not going to provide a quote." We spend time setting up site visits in advance, where we have contractors just not show up because they're busy on projects where they're actually making money. It, it's just not working the way it is. We were approached by Community Resources specifically because the, the process is simply not working well. It's been eight years since the last update, and it was time for us to look at it again. The changes that we're proposing allow our experienced project managers to select the best contractors for the job and negotiate a fair price. Now, this is an important distinction. Even though the construction services that we're discussing here are comparable to those of a residential nature, that you may be getting done on your, on your own home, we're not a residential homeowner as a client. We have project managers with years of experience in their professions. They're putting together specifications and plans, they know the materials, they know the labor needed to complete the work, and they're in an excellent position to negotiate, and will be able to spend more time and energy doing so, as opposed to simply trying to get contractors to respond. Ultimately, we're still trying to get the best value for the city. Here in red is really the gist of what we've come down to, that is, the extent of the revisions that we are asking for tonight, simply to change the threshold from 5,000 to 10,000 for construction services only, and that's very important. Now, as part of our due diligence process, we did look around at our competitors, basically other agencies and municipalities up and down the front range. And more than half of the jurisdictions that we looked at actually have higher thresholds than we do. And those thresholds are across the board for all of their purchases. But we decided to take a more conservative approach, so what we're asking for is strictly to apply this increase from 5,000 to 10,000 for construction services only. And this is really a reaction to the changing marketplace that we are having to deal with. With that, I would welcome any questions.
Thank you, sir. If you want to grab a seat at the table, we're going to open the public hearing, or open the public comment portion. Nobody's signed up, so I'm going to close the public comment portion. I'm going to ask Counselor Abel to please read this in, and then we'll begin questions.
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of Ordinance O-2020-4 on second and final reading.
Second.
Motion of second, Counselor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I guess I have a few questions, just to kind of walk through the process. Later, earlier this afternoon, I kind of looked around and saw that a lot of folks are struggling with this same issue, certainly from a transparency standpoint. You know, our community wants to make sure that we're spending the money wisely. I wanted to ask, have you guys looked at, and I'm sure this has already been covered, kind of maybe some parametric and analogous estimating, rather than getting site visits? Some of the lists that was on there looked like it was more, could be charged out by the square footage, where they could give an estimate of the core service, and then have the, the writer that talked about any of the additional services that may be required, let's say, the underlayment underneath carpet. You can do the carpet by the, by the yard, but then the underlayment. Did you guys walk through that to see if you could just change the estimating techniques for that to address the underlying problem?
We do constantly work, our procurement folks work constantly with Community Resources, who again, manage most of these projects. And we strive to go through the most efficient process possible for each individual project. Again, unfortunately, even when it comes to something as simple as carpeting, the contractor needs to come out to see what is involved in removing the existing carpeting, what the space looks like. It's not just the measurements, how access is being provided, where they can get to and from to bring materials in, take materials out, what they are removing, and what they are dealing with as far as adjacent walls, materials that they're tying into, and so forth. So, unfortunately, what we've found generally in the past, with some exceptions, if we go too much by a commodity pricing based on square footage or whatnot, a lot is missed, and then we wind up with more change orders, changes, delays, and higher costs in the long run.
Thank you. As a project manager, I kind of wanted to walk through that, so that did help with that. Has there also been, you know, an investigation to see if some of these smaller projects could be turned into more of a program? So, let's say you have a single building that has six different small projects, could those be more efficiently put into a program for that? That way, it would kind of pass that threshold and become more profitable for them to bid on the work as a whole? Or are the projects so different that you can't put them together? There'd be no one vendor who could adequately take care of those disparate needs?
That's correct. Most of the time, the individual disciplines that are involved are separate enough that we need a drywall contractor, we may need a plumbing contractor. And again, we're talking about small projects, where we're typically going in to fix problems that need to be taken care of in a timely fashion. It's different, and we certainly do that when we're remodeling an entire facility, and there may be a dozen different disciplines involved. We can hire a general contractor, they come in and organize all the individual disciplines, but they can hit everything at once. The, the type of projects that we're, we're looking at, which is really in the 5,000 to 10,000 range, are very small in nature, and that really doesn't work, because we can't wait until there's enough work to escalate it to a higher bid process, to make it more worthwhile for a larger contractor, because then we're dealing with failing facilities.
No, and that helps to explain it. And that's why I wanted to dig, because at first, I was much more reluctant. I'm certainly kind of trying to absorb all of this. So, from a cost-benefit standpoint, when you can do the general contractor, and it's not a, a need where, just in time, where you've got to take care of that right away, you're already looking for those cost efficiencies. This is really more for, like, emergency maintenance and those types of needs, is that right?
Absolutely. And not necessarily, I wouldn't classify it as emergency, but repairs that are needed in a relatively timely fashion, such as we, we currently have needs at one of our recreation center for roof repairs. The estimate, our, our project managers are estimating somewhere in the 7,000 to 8,000 range. Getting three roof contractors to come out there and give us quotes is incredibly difficult. And we're talking, what are we now, two years after the, the hail damage? There really haven't been any major storm, storms in this timeframe, but still, it is extremely difficult to get contractors to come out there for these small-dollar contracts. Now, the city does obviously do many larger projects. When we have projects in the hundreds of thousands of dollars and even millions, we do go through a formal bidding process, and we do get very good competition in those cases. But these small ones, there is just so much work involved in putting together a quote, and then in dealing with the requirements of the city, insurance and everything else that's involved, that quite frankly, there just isn't the profit margin there to make it worthwhile for most contractors, when they can go to a homeowner and do a similar type of work, get it done quickly, and get their money and be on their way.
A question, because obviously, we have a lot of, you know, small businesses in the area, and you said earlier- And you said earlier that you basically, if all things being equal, you defer to local businesses. But I wanted to ask, do you, are the project managers required to fill out a vendor scorecard at the end of the project so we can ensure that we're getting quality service? And that opens the door for maybe a vendor who's not providing great service, that we then can look for other local talent to fill those needs?
They don't fill out a scorecard per se, but we, and we work again very closely with Community Resources on this because any time during a project that we have less than the expected performance and outcomes, we document, document, document. We communicate with the contractors. We try to get the issues resolved as they are happening. But if they are not resolved to a reasonable satisfaction, we do retain those documents. And there have been instances where contractors have come back, bid on our projects, and we have said, "Thank you, but no thank you. We have documentation of your poor performance on our very own projects, and we are not going to allow you to work on our facilities again." So we are very diligent about doing that.
And last question, what happens if you don't get three bids? What do you do? What's the process? So let's say that, you know, you obviously say you're struggling, so you don't get three people to show up. Then how does that work? How does the process work?
Then those questions ultimately come to me, and that's been happening more and more frequently. Typically, what I ask for the project managers to do is demonstrate that they have made that effort to get those quotes. And if we can document that we have made a concerted effort to contact the appropriate contractors and we're simply not getting the responses, then there's really not much more we can do.
Understood. So it is becoming a hardship. I just wanted to demonstrate that. Thank you for all the answers. Appreciate it.
Counselor Gutwin?
Thank you. I also had a number of questions. Many were answered already through the presentation, so thank you. And I still have a couple more. I think, you know, one of the reasons that we go through a quote process is to make sure that we're getting the best value and for the city and for our taxpayer dollars. I think another reason is to make sure that there's opportunity for, you know, all of our small and local businesses with it. And that's kind of what we've been talking about. My concern is that if we move away from the quote process, how that's going to impact our businesses? What I'm hearing from you is that we're just, we're not getting even, you know, we're not even getting three people willing to come out. So the first question is, what kind of, how are we reaching out to the businesses? How are they finding out about these opportunities or these jobs?
We do post both, certainly our... Pardon me. We do post our bids and RFPs on a site called BidNet that's actually used by, I forget the count, a couple of hundred agencies throughout the state. We also utilize that site for our quotes many times because contractors from all around the area, depending on the type of services that they provide, basically can register and they're notified whenever we have projects out there. So they don't have to come specifically to look at Lakewood's website on a regular basis. They get notifications when we have projects that fit the scope of services that they provide. Now, when it comes to small-dollar contracts, there are a number of ways. We contact contractors that we have done business with before. And while that may seem to limit access, it actually works well because we know the contractors, again, going back to the previous questions, who have actually performed, who have performed well and for good prices. Many times, we work with contractors that are already working on other city projects, such as currently we have some large roofing projects that we went out to forbid for. And we found that we had a couple of more small roof projects that we needed. We were able to get some of those contractors on board to help us out with the additional work. We do also get constantly contacted by vendors of all sorts, both construction and vendors selling products and other services, either directly in purchasing or through the various departments. And we forward those contacts to the appropriate project managers. So when they do have a project that comes up that fits those scope of services, they have those references to go to and they can contact the appropriate vendors.
Great. Okay, thank you. And then you also mentioned this. I just want to understand a little better about, you know, you're not just looking at the best price, but you're also looking at, you know, safety and quality and all of those other things. And is that a formal process that's gone through? Or is that kind of, yeah, could you explain a little bit more about that?
Sure. Again, as I mentioned before, when we do an RFP, a request for proposal, those are specifically projects where cost is not the prime factor. So in that case, for instance, selecting an architect, you know, we will at some point discuss cost, but we want to know who the people working are on the project, what kind of work they've done, samples, perhaps an approach to what they're doing, whatnot. When we're dealing with bids and quotes, the primary factor is cost, primary but not the sole factor. Depending on the type of project, and we work with the project managers on this, we will look at, again, past performances. Many times, another very crucial component is timing, especially on some of these projects. If we can get a contractor to come out there this weekend because we know we have a storm coming up next week, we may very well be willing to pay, you know, an extra 5% to 10%, whatever the difference is between quotes, so we can evaluate that based on other criteria.
That makes sense. And I know, you know, most of my experience with this is, as a homeowner and, you know, if you have a plumbing problem, you're gonna, you might be willing to pay a little extra to get someone out right away than if it's something that can wait. The next question I have is, you mentioned, you know, most of the companies that we're dealing with with this kind of job that we're talking about, under $10,000. These are going to be small and local businesses. They're not big contractors, and they're most, more than likely not out of state, and that the local contractors are preferred. And is that a formalized process as well that we will pick them local with everything else being equal?
That is specifically written into the code that if all else is equal, local vendors will be selected. But quite honestly, with projects under $10,000, we really, unless it's very specialized work, we can't get interest from anybody that's outside of a moderate commuting distance. Certainly nowhere near Colorado Springs, Fort Collins. There's just no money in it at that cost to allow a contractor to travel those distances, even for the actual work, let alone getting quotes.
That makes sense. I think, I think if there was a way to kind of formalize that we are using small and local businesses, since we, for practical purposes, we already are, that might be a nice thing. Right, I think those are all of my questions. Thank you.
Counselor Abel?
Thank you, Mayor. Often have work done at my house. It was built in the '30s and is at that age for small things need to be done quite frequently. I don't have a problem getting folks to come out and tell me how much they're going to charge for whatever I'm looking at doing. And I have a concern that, it's just human nature to call somebody you're familiar with when you have one of these needs. And I'm concerned that new folks in the business will never get a shot at it if we're calling the people, the vendors that we're familiar with and saying, "Hey, you want to come do another thing for me?" And my final concern is that your figures show we have a 42 increase in costs, construction costs, in that time period. And we're, our remedy is 100% increase in authority. So I'm just a little bit concerned about the imbalance there. Can you address those things?
Sure. You're correct. The indices show somewhere around 40, 45% increase, depending on where you look. And we could certainly have come to you and asked for a 50% increase to $7,500. That is actually somewhat of an awkward threshold. As I mentioned before, in looking at the other comparable agencies in our general area around the front range, there, I think there's maybe one that has lower thresholds than we do, one or two. There are handfuls that are in the $5,000 that we have. And then more than half of them are $10,000 and above. $7,500 was just one, a slightly awkward number, plus the fact that it gets us to today. And with the rapidly escalating costs that we're seeing, we're going to have the same issues not eight years from now, but two to three years from now. Because if you look at those cost increases, the first couple of years, they were actually relatively modest as we were still coming out of the recession. But it was really in the past three to four years that we have seen a parabolic increase. So we're trying to look ahead. Quite honestly, $10,000 across the board, I think, would have been a reasonable increase for quotes, not just for construction services. But again, we chose to be a bit more conservative and focus strictly on construction because, as I mentioned, some of the other items that we're constantly purchasing, technology has improved where we can actually get quotes much faster than we used to. But construction just isn't the case.
And the concern about new startups having a hard time breaking into the loop?
That is certainly a viable concern. What I would say is, again, we are always open when we get typically phone calls and sometimes emails, nobody sends mail anymore these days, with new vendors, products, services that they want to offer the city, whether they come directly to us or to the various departments. We disseminate that information so it is readily available when those projects do come up. Unfortunately, we're not seeing that in the construction end of things. I get many contacts daily when it comes to lots of other products, gas detectors, copiers, all sorts of other things. But when it comes to construction services, we're just not seeing that.
One of my colleagues mentioned transparency in these things. Would this decrease the transparency that is so evident now?
It would not. As you know, all of our purchases are even a third level of approval. So it's not just up to one individual to select their buddies to do the work.
I didn't mean to infer it was their buddies. It's just easier when I want something done to call somebody I already know.
It absolutely is. And again, there's two sides to that coin. There certainly is the danger of perhaps becoming too close or excluding those that are not with that circle. But we're also seeing the positives of building relationships with contractors where they are more willing to come out quicker if they know that they have the job, that they have worked with us before. So we have their insurance on file. They have gone through the processes to register the licensing and everything else. And that makes a huge difference in getting these small projects done and out of the way so that the other city services can be provided, such as the recreation centers and so forth.
Thank you.
So I have Counselor Bida and then Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Stan Su, is that the correct pronunciation?
Stan Chu, but I'm used to pretty much all pronunciations.
Well, thank you for understanding. Yeah, appreciate your presentation tonight. I have a few questions. I don't know whether you're aware, I spent a number of years at General Services Administration out at the Federal Center. And one of the primary functions of the GSA is that they're the purchasing arm for the entire federal government, all of the various agencies, including and not limited to the Department of Defense. They have a very complicated and well-thought-out acquisition program. It's referred to affectionately as the FAR. Have you ever heard of that? Federal Acquisition Rules and Regulations. And I actually was tasked at one point as senior counsel to help rewrite some of the provisions of the FAR. So I do know a little bit about this. And one of the, I understand the problem that you're facing. It's not uncommon. One of the provisions of the FAR is that they allow for what's known as an IDIQ. Are you familiar with that term and that provision at all? And I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just was wondering if you...
Not the initials off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, it stands for indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, IDIQ. And what that means is that they'll go, they'll take and put out to bid a contract, and they'll put it out to bid to a number of contractors, and they'll pick three, three of the best, that will come in and do these kind of projects on an as-needed basis. And they've already set the parameters as to what the cost is going to be. For example, to say painting, the contractors agree to paint a wall for X dollars a square foot, the tram is going to be X dollars per linear foot. If it's concrete, it's going to be this price. If it's, you know, sheetrock, it's this price. If it's a ceiling, it's more. If it's floor, it's this price. But it's all set out in this, in a schedule and so forth. And so then, when it comes time and they have a fairly small project, they don't have to go out and try and find a bid. They've already got three contractors who have agreed to do it. And then they'll compete within themselves to do this small job. And I'm wondering if we have anything like that here in Lakewood, in our procurement rules? Or has there been any consideration to doing something along the lines of an IDIQ?
Actually, we do have that exact same setup, and we do have contractors. We typically try to award to three contractors, a non-exclusive award. It presents the advantage that we go through all of the formalities ahead of time as far as getting their insurance approvals and everything else. So that does save some time and work. The type of work that we're getting done, even though we may be able to get some pricing ahead of time, it's generalized pricing, and they still need to come in to give us those quotes for the individual project. And we're finding that even those contractors that we have pre-qualified and we have that relationship with are not willing to come back to give us a quote, to have a one out of three chance of perhaps getting the project.
And you're saying they don't, they're not required to at least be under their contract that they've been awarded to come in and do these projects? Or they're free to turn them down?
We certainly cannot require them to do so.
Well, I'm not sure I agree with that. On the federal side, we do. I mean, they're, that's part of their agreement. They're going to come in and do it if they're awarded the job, so.
Our only remedy if they don't come in and participate would be to not allow them to come in and participate so that that really doesn't help us out.
Yeah. Yeah, terminate the contract and get somebody else in there that's willing to do it.
That's the problem that we're dealing with, though, is we've already have a lack of competition, and we'd be reducing it even more if we did that.
Well, all right. I'm just not sure I agree with that. You know, when they're, that's the whole idea of the IDIQ contract, is they're going to get a bunch of work over a period of years of this kind of work. It's going to be small projects, but they're going to get a bunch... It's going to be small projects, but they're going to get a bunch of it. And it makes it worthwhile for them to do it. And if they're not willing to do it under those circumstances, then they should be terminated and give somebody else an opportunity.
We cannot pre-guarantee them any amount of work because even if they do come in and all three of them give us quotes, if Contractor A consistently comes in and gives us the highest of the three quotes for each project, we're not going to award that work to him.
All right. All right. Thank you very much.
Counselor Harrison.
About a week ago, we, at my home, had a little water heater leak, right before we were supposed to head out for vacation. So we did a couple of frantic phone calls and found that the prices ranged anywhere from 3,000 to 1,500 to 600. The 3,000 said it would take them two weeks. The 1,500 said it would take them a month. And the 600 said maybe in two months. So when you got a water heater leak going, and I'm thinking of the same thing for the city, you kind of need to get the work done. And as long as it's done timely and with qualified contractors that you're trusting, I think this increase to 10,000 is very appropriate. And if staff's not doing their job and we're still getting the quotes and the quality that we need, I think that's what's important. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
So Mr. Stan-Su, just real quick, I want to, I don't know if I was hearing everything. I think maybe we were both talking, or Counselor Bita was talking the same kind of language, but a little bit different as you were. The idea, what he's saying is you bid something for $75,000, and you're responsible. We call you, and you have up to that contract on that level. But I think what you're saying is we do do that. But right now, is if you have to go and get that quote, so something comes up out of the blue, the way our things are written, and it's $5,000 or less, you still have to, regardless of if they have a contract, to do these certain things, they still have to come back and give you a quote, three different people?
Well, I want to differentiate a bit. We have, let's say, in our Public Works Division, we go out for annual contract for concrete work. And they give us a, we give them a list of items, and all the contractors bid on a per-item basis. And each year, we award to the lowest overall contractor. And then as the work comes up, we say, okay, in this spot, we know that we need 50 cubic yards of concrete, you know, so many cubic yards of asphalt, there's mobilization, come out and do this work. And actually, those contracts are typically in the million-dollar range. And we can do that because that work is generalized enough across the board that it works out. With the projects that we're dealing with here, coming in and replacing the plumbing and piping at the pool at the Carmody Rec Center is not the same as replacing the piping and pump at Green Mountain Rec Center. So we may be able to get general costs for an hourly service ahead of time, but no more than that. We can compare contractors and say, yes, Contractors A, B, and C, you three are qualified. You gave us good hourly prices. And we will go through and sign contracts, get your insurance, and have everything lined up. When the work actually comes up that we have an issue at Green Mountain Rec Center, we need to have an actual quote for that work because it is specific enough. It's not just the type of pump, but where it is, how it's connected, the access there to, the hours that can be worked on, all of those items that go into the lengthy and detailed plans and specifications that we have to put together, they're specific to that project. So Contractor A may be able to do it more efficiently, even though their hourly prices might be higher. So we don't know that until we actually get quotes for the specific projects. That's the issue that we run into.
And I certainly, I mean, you've been very thorough. This makes a lot of sense. And $10,000 does not go very far these days, especially when you're looking at construction. Anybody who's been close to this industry knows just how hard it is right now. And I reached out to different friends who are in, you know, different aspects of this. Because we had a couple of comments worried about the small business. And we have a pref already that says we try to do our local business, which is great. Keep in mind, we don't have a disadvantaged or a minority program in the city. And that's for a different day. That's not what's before us. So that's, you know, a whole nother conversation. But with what we have, and the fact that I have great faith that you would not want to come to this body for a lot of reasons, to say, hey, this is really impeding the service that we are trying to provide for our residents at a high value. I appreciate that. I certainly support this. And I think if council wants to look at things beyond that, we'd have to get a better understanding of what do minority or disadvantaged programs look like? How do those things work? But I know that was part of those concerns. So I'm certainly in full support and appreciate your thoroughness in presenting this tonight. I have Counselor Johnson and Counselor Franks.
Thank you. You gave a very thorough presentation. I just have, you said one comment, and I just wanted to follow up on that, that prior to the 2012, I think it was the zoning rewrite, and that included, or you said in 2012? It wasn't associated with the zoning rewrite? Okay.
No. This had absolutely nothing to do with the zoning rewrite. We basically repealed and reenacted the entire purchasing policies, Section 3.04, strictly relative to procurement and purchasing.
Okay. What was the threshold prior to that rewrite? Do you know?
There were a number of thresholds. The 50,000 and above did not change. Mainly, the $5,000 threshold that we enacted was previously $2,500. So we doubled that. There were lots of other small cleanup changes, but in that section, that was probably the main change, was going from the $2,500 threshold to 5,000.
Okay. I'm not comfortable with all of us micromanaging things. But since this has all come up, you've been talking about, you know, if you need a plumber for Green Mountain, it's different than Carmody. How often does it come up that the city needs specific types of occupations for different things like a plumber?
I don't know that I can answer how many separate individual projects we would get of that nature. There are many that up. Typically, it's the larger ones that come through the purchasing department. The small ones, certainly anything under $25,000, whether it needs quotes or not, are usually handled by department buyers. We have a partially decentralized system. So with those, we typically don't see them at all. Or if we do, it's strictly to review that they did follow the ordinance and had the appropriate quotes attached.
Like I say, it almost feels like I'm getting into micromanagement. But if there's the need for some specific type of person, does it make sense, or has it ever been thought of, to hire like a plumber on call that would be on staff, but only paid when they were actually called, rather than to even go through all this? Maybe that's a stupid question, but I still think it's...
Well, we do have, plumbing is a good example. We do have plumbers on call that we can call up and say, when it's below the threshold, we can just call them up and say, come here, do the work. And we supervise them to see how many hours are put in, the materials, and we can get that done. If it's a $2,000, $3,000 project, there's no quotes involved, it gets done. Right now, if it's a $6,000 project, we can't do that. We need to get three quotes because that's what the code states.
The interesting thing about all this is that as a city councilor, the sentiment within the community is a little bit, they have concern about staff, to be frank with you. And the timing for this is a little bit awkward to allow staff to have a little bit more leeway. And I think that's part of the reluctance for some, is that there's just a concern about the trust, if you will, with staff. And I don't know how else to say it.
I would like to clarify that this absolutely does not affect any decision-making by this body, by the city council. These are currently staff decisions that are being made through a quote process. Staff makes the decision as to who to reach out to, to get a quote from. They make the contact, they do the selection. So it is currently a staff process with the minor change from 5,000 to 10,000. So that component of it, as far as who is making these approvals, is not changing.
Thank you.
Counselor Franks and then Counselor Gutwin.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. So I did come in tonight with concerns about the transparency, but I think I've worked through most of those. So basically, through our Lakewood ledger, people would be able to track all of that spending, as far as which vendors are getting the work. Is that true? So basically, that shows up as a vendor line item in the Lakewood ledger, is that correct?
Absolutely. And that's the case, whether it's 10,000, 5,000, or 500.
Right. So people can look, we can look historically at what's been spent with vendors A, B, and C, and then we can see what the future looks like for vendors A, B, and C. So I think I've kind of worked through that. And to pick up on what Mayor Paul had said, it sounds to me like when you and Counselor Bita were having your discussion, is we simply don't have the volume of work for these types of things where you're not going to get people who are just going to be on the hook for something that may not come up once every six months. So it's more of a, we don't have the volume of the work as a city to kind of have these people on retainers for instant responses to quotes. Would that be a fair way of phrasing it?
We don't have the volume and consistency of work. One year, obviously, we may have an inundation of roof repairs, which we have had. Other years, we're dealing with plumbing that is outdated and failing. Depending on needs and budgetary constraints, if we have the opportunity to fix a wood floor that is in disrepair, we're going to take advantage of that. So these projects are across a wide spectrum of services, and they come up on an individual basis, as opposed to being able to say that we're going to plan ahead for three years and accumulate all of the wood floors that need to be refinished and put it out as one large project. And quite frankly, we do also have someone of an advantage of being able to work with those smaller businesses because these projects are small. The small, local businesses are going to have a hard time bidding on a $700,000 roof replacement. When it comes to a $5,000 to $10,000 roof repair, that's where the small and local businesses are really going to come in.
And my last question is, if we do have local vendors who reach out to us, is it that Rocky Mountain e-purchasing system, that BidNet Direct that you talked about? Is that where they would register if they were wanting to get business with the city? Is that the correct spot to direct them to?
We do both. That really is the best spot because, again, they can do it, there's a small fee if they choose additional services, but they can actually sign up for free, absolutely no charge. They can get push notifications where if they register as, say, a drywall contractor, anytime that a drywall project comes up, be it from the city of Lakewood, Denver, Jefferson County, or numerous other agencies in the area, they will get a notification saying, hey, there's a project coming up for drywall contractors, here's the link to it, do you want to bid? So that is their best bet. They certainly are more than welcome to also contact us personally, and we will keep their information on file for the small contracts that may not go out there on the EBIT system.
Great. So that's a couple different avenues. Thank you so much for all the answers. I really appreciate it.
Counselor Gutwin.
Thank you. I really appreciate all of the discussion, and I feel like I have a much better understanding of the issue now. I think that, I think it would make sense at some point for us as a body to have a longer, in-depth conversation about, you know, ensuring that we're supporting our local businesses however possible and minority-owned businesses. That's not a conversation for tonight and probably not for 2020, since we already finished our planning process. But maybe next year, we can take a deeper dive into this. I don't want to hold up operations at this point, and I do feel confident in the transparency and also in staff's ability to, you know, ensure we're getting the best quality. I think that, you know, it's just our job to make sure that we are keeping the doors open to all of our businesses, and I'd like to continue to explore how we can do that. Maybe there's other, you know, other than BidNet, maybe there's other boards that we can look at and just continue to reach out to our businesses, even if we do approve this. So I think I do feel more comfortable now. I hope this isn't the end of these conversations as a body. Thank you for all of your hard work.
Okay. So we have a motion. A second, any other comments? I would, just before we vote, say thank you, Adrian, for your presentation. And, you know, if you historically look at our satisfaction surveys with the types of facilities or the departments that you are talking about and working with, they are always, every year, very high with great, I think, customer satisfaction and resident support. So we appreciate that. With that, please cast your votes. That passes seven ayes, three nays, the nays being Bita Springsteen-Johnson. The clerk, please read Item 12.
Item 12, Ordinance 0-2020-5, amending Title 10 of the Lakewood Municipal Code pertaining to vehicles and traffic.
Okay. I'll now open the public hearing on Ordinance 2020-5. And I'm going to invite Lauren Stanek, our Assistant City Attorney and Municipal Prosecutor, to the lectern. And we also have Jenna Roth, our Deputy City Attorney, who'll be here to help with any kind of questions. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, for giving me an opportunity to go through our comprehensive Title 10 update. And just to give everyone a little bit of background about how we arrived at this update, the last comprehensive update was done by Ms. Janet Young in 2016. What typically kind of our process looks like is every few years, we will review some of the legislation at the state level related to vehicles and traffic. We also take into account some feedback from the municipal prosecutor's office, as well as the police department, in the event that the police sergeants, especially the traffic sergeants, have any input about enforcement issues or anything that they see, needs to be updated. This particular update was actually started by Ms. Young before she retired in 2018. So we inherited this project, and she had done about a third of it before we took it over. So I'm going to go through basically what we looked at, what we looked to change. I will tell the panel that about 80 to 85% of what I'm going to talk about tonight was actually state legislation that was put forward. So most of this is really kind of out of our hands, so to speak. And I'll point to the areas in the staff memo and the red line version that you have where that's applicable. I'll spend more time on the changes we're looking to make that came out of either feedback from the municipal prosecution office... that came out of either feedback from the Municipal Prosecution Office or some of the cleanup work that we look to do based on the rest of the title. So I'll spend a little bit more time there because those are the ones that were changes that were put forward by staff, not state legislation. I think the easiest way to go through this is just going to be sequentially because there are a number of changes, and I don't want to jump around too much. So it may be helpful for those of you to look at the redline version or clean version of Title 10 as I go through each ordinance. And again, I'll spend less time, I'll highlight the state legislation and mention the bills, but I'm going to spend less time on those changes simply because they already have been enacted and they're already law. Beginning with the first ordinance, 10.33020, this particular ordinance was changed after House Bill 19-1298. That particular bill, in the 2019 legislative session, dealt with using electric motor vehicle charging stations for parking motor vehicles. This would actually be a new ordinance to Title 10 for us. I don't, the language exactly mirrors its state counterpart. I don't imagine that this will come up a lot. As of right now, it's most likely going to take effect, I think, when we see more and more private businesses set up electric charging stations. It's really to discourage vehicles that are not electrically charged vehicles from parking there, particularly overnight. I know in Denver, several businesses, like there's a few Whole Foods and a few other locations that have this setup, and they are trying to enforce it so that there's not people parking either during the day or overnight, taking up that space when they don't have an electric vehicle. Again, the language mirrors its state counterparts, so I didn't change anything on that front. The next ordinance is 10.33065. That particular ordinance pertaining to food trucks, it's completely in red in the version simply because I moved it so that it appears sequentially in the title. It used to be at the end of 10.33, so it was sandwiched between two other ordinances that were not in numerical order. But the only thing we really added was a penalty clause. So previously, this ordinance didn't have any sort of penalty associated to it. So when it would be charged, the judges had a difficult time discerning what it was subject to. So in this case, it would be what I guess you could call sort of our lowest classification or Class 4 traffic offense. So that's been included under B5. The next two ordinance changes, and I'll talk about these together because they basically are being put forth for the same reason. When this body actually passed changes to the recreational vehicle and travel trailer ordinance back in the fall, that was ordinance 10.33075. At the time, and this is something I probably should have brought up sooner, but at the time, there were two other ordinances that sort of operate in conjunction with this ordinance. Those are 10.33070 and 10.33076. Those two ordinances contained the old language that talked about just parking in adjacent residential neighborhoods. And I know the language was changed to actually include all public right-of-ways. And so what I did with these particular changes is I went through to make sure the language was uniform, to take out the language that specifically discussed any lot in any residential zone district so that now we know it applies to the public right-of-way. The way this will read now is that 10.33.075 would look the same as the ordinance preceding it and the ordinance following it. So this is primarily cleanup language, as I mentioned again, and now it won't refer specifically just to the residential zone districts. Okay. Moving on to the next ordinance, this was one that was put forward by specifically the Prosecution Office, 10.36.070. And I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this to explain our change. So this proposed amendment gave us a little bit of trouble at trial, and it was because ultimately, the court, in this case, the judge that presided over the case, found that it was too subjective. The language that specifically they found was subjective was there was no definition of what constituted a specific width to allow the parking of a motor vehicle that would not interfere with the passage of a bicycle within any designated bikeway or pedestrian walkway. I know that one of council's big topics this year is going to be bike and pedestrian safety. And so what this ordinance did essentially was, the two times that this has come up where it was charged, the court found, ended up finding that the driver of the vehicle that was parked not guilty simply because they really didn't know what constituted a sufficient width. A specific example was a case that I handled actually in 2014. It was a trial that, basically, where a truck was parked on the side, adjacent to a bicycle lane. The truck was cited for basically interfering or being too close to the bicycle lane. The defendant in that case presented some evidence that the average parking space is 10 feet wide, the average vehicle is 6 feet wide. So they argued that they had essentially four feet to spare, and this was more than a sufficient width. The problem we realized was, again, it doesn't account really for, you know, if there's a side mirror, if there's any sort of, you know, additional width, if the car's parked directly next to the curb or if it's, you know, 6 to 8 inches off the curb. There are a lot of variables. It also doesn't account for necessarily the type of bicyclist that may be biking there. Is it somebody who is very proficient and they are an avid rider or maybe even a semi-professional rider? Is it, you know, somebody who might be not a very capable rider? But it doesn't account for a lot of factors like the type of vehicle, bicycle, rider, et cetera. We did debate trying to just define what would constitute a sufficient width and just have that benchmark in the ordinance. But again, we ran into the same problems where there are some factors you simply can't account for. For instance, it's winter right now, and there is still some ice and snow debris along the roadway that's not completely clear, and the car can't park directly adjacent to a curb. So they're parked maybe 6 to 8 inches off the curb. Would this still leave a sufficient width? Would this still be open to some sort of subjectivity on the part of the court? Probably. So instead of doing that, we opted in this case to try to take out what was subjective about the ordinance. We also looked at Title 42 of the Colorado Revised Statutes, the state statutes, to see if they had any guidance. They don't specifically have anything regarding parking that relates to bicycle lanes. So this isn't, I guess, one benefit is we're not trying to do anything that would be counter to the state model traffic code. We're not trying to do anything that would, again, run afoul of that. We're really just trying to take out that subjective element because otherwise, really, on its face, this ordinance would essentially be almost unenforceable. There may be scenarios where it would be, I guess, if the car was over the actual bike lane. But otherwise, if we found ourselves at trial, I think we'd have some difficulty proving this ordinance. This did come up again in 2018 with a similar issue. So it has been something that, at least from the prosecution perspective, we've run into twice. I wasn't able to find, you know, all the times it's been charged and what those dispositions were because we did move to a new record-keeping system in last year. So I wasn't able to go back in time, but I do know it has been an issue in the past. The next ordinance we'll be discussing, next proposed ordinance change, is, again, it's 10.39.120. This was, again, another state statute. This was presented in House Bill 18-1296. And that House bill created some exceptions that would allow motorists to leave a vehicle unattended in certain limited circumstances. So I know that this is the season where we see a lot of information in campaigns about puffers and vehicles and some of those concerns. This would prevent that because essentially, the party, if they were to run their vehicle and leave it unattended, would still be subject to adequate security measures. They would also, in many cases, have to use a key fob that keeps the car locked, but it may start the car automatically. So the state did account for that. But again, that was language that was put forward in that House bill in the 2018 legislative session. The next change, 10.39.130, directly below that unattended motor vehicle ordinance. This one is a subtle change. We are seeking to, again, take out one word, perceptible. Basically, that no person driving or in charge of a motor vehicle shall permit it to stand on any perceptible grade. This was similar to the discussion earlier about subjectivity. This language is not actually contained in its state counterpart. Its state counterpart, CRS 42-4-1206, does not include the word perceptible and uses the language above. So it just says, basically, the state statute says, "on any grade," without effectively. So we don't know exactly what the origin or why that was included in the ordinance historically, but to better conform with the state statute and also to remove that subjectivity, we're asking to remove that single word. And again, we would just still be enforcing any offenses where, basically, a vehicle is parked on any grade. Again, if there's not adequate measures taken and it somehow rolls into traffic or moves into traffic, that would still be enforceable, and we wouldn't have to be debating whether it was a perceptible grade or not, whether somebody took a marble and rolled it down or not. We wouldn't be getting into those kinds of issues at trial. So that was an ordinance change that was, again, put forward by the Prosecution Office. The next issue here, 10.45.090. This has to deal with when signals are inoperative or malfunctioning. This ordinance change was, again, a state legislative item. This was changed in Senate Bill 19-144. And the state basically took up a couple issues. One, basically, how to proceed when lights are inoperative. Two, how to proceed if you're a motorcyclist and the light signals don't pick up on your vehicle, so to speak, because it's too small. The state decided that they would make an exception where if the traffic control device did not recognize a motorcycle, they provided more guidance as to what the motorcycle driver should do. They also provided a little bit of cleanup language about when a driver approaches an intersection that has an inoperable signal, how they should proceed. So that, again, was put forward at the state legislature. I mirrored the language off of that and cleaned up a little bit, just in some instances where it says, whenever, the state decided to change it to when. So things like that, but the language mirrors its state counterpart. The next change in Title 10 is a new ordinance, or a proposed new ordinance, rather, 10.50.015. This involves nuisance concerning motor vehicle exhaust. This was proposed, actually, in 2017, Senate Bill 17-278. And Ms. Young had incorporated this when I took this project over. But this ordinance mirrors its state counterpart, which is contained in CRS 42-4314. It would prohibit individuals from engaging in nuisance exhibition, basically exhaust, and it defines what that entails. And it goes on to talk about soot and other things. It does provide exceptions for some trucks and things of that nature, which are going to be in subsection B, and then it provided for a penalty clause in subsection C. The language, again, mirrors its state counterpart, only the penalty clauses are in line with our penalty provisions in Lakewood. I apologize. The next change was 10.57.090. And this was also a state legislative item. This was Senate Bill 19-028. And the Senate, the legislature, rather, actually distinguished for the first time mounting front license plates and rear license plates before they just referred generally to numbered plates. This ordinance mirrors its state counterpart, and it now does have pretty similar but slightly different requirements for how the front license plate and rear license plate should be mounted. I did not change any of the requirements from the state counterpart, so that's going to mirror the exact language. And it also, it does renumber the sections as well because it accounted for the new subsection D, which was distinguishing how the front license plate should be mounted. So the subsections were renumbered. Moving on, the next proposed change is 10.60.100. And I am going to spend a bit of time on this because this was proposed from the Municipal Prosecution Office. And I think there were also a few questions regarding the penalty provisions that I'm going to clarify. So previously, in Lakewood, before this proposed change, we had a Title 10 traffic violation for people throwing or depositing certain foreign debris. And this, most likely, most people refer to it as sort of littering. The problem was that it accounted for a specific number of things in subsection A, but if they weren't enumerated in subsection A, then we weren't able to charge anyone with littering under this title. We would have to charge them under our criminal Title IX. So just to give the council and the body an example, under subsection B in this proposed ordinance, someone could throw a lit cigarette out the window. They would be charged as a traffic violator. Conversely, someone could throw a tissue box out the window, and we would have no other option but to charge them for illegal dumping under 9.30, which is a criminal misdemeanor. We felt that it was more appropriate to bring some of those items that were previously criminal under the traffic code so that someone would still receive a fine but would not receive a criminal charge, especially given kind of the, you know, similar conduct. We still have the charges under Title 9.30 if there is something significant. And it's called the Littering and Dumping Section. That's if, for, say, somebody is cleaning out an apartment and they dump a mattress, a couch, a bunch of stuff, you know, on the side of the road. That is something where we may look, instead of littering, we may look to a more significant consequence, like the Title IX criminal charge. But in this case, subsection C states that no person shall throw or deposit upon any street or highway within this municipality any junk, rubbish, trash, or debris. So that will cover a lot more conduct, say, the throwing a tissue box out the window, basically, anything that's not enumerated in A or B. We also renumbered the sections. And one correction that I have to tender to council and at the end of this presentation, if there are no other amendments, Mr. Cox will probably ask for a motion. But one thing that was inaccurate, the penalty provisions, and thank you, Councilmember Gutwijn, for bringing this to my attention, but I just want to specify that if you look under subsection F of the proposed redline, I do want to clarify, I put some of the subsections in the wrong areas, so I just want to clarify this. Under subsection F, two, any person who violates any provision of, it should still be subsection B, that is, the Lit Cigarette section. That is a Class 2 traffic offense, and that should remain a Class 2 traffic offense. So it should not be C, it should be B. And then under subsection 3, any person who violates subsection A, or that should be C of this section. So I apologize, I transposed C and B. So I do want to correct that, and we can remedy that at the end. So how this will essentially work is that any person charged under this title, according to this F, this penalty provision, they are subject to a Class 4 traffic offense, which is, again, our lowest fine. However, there are then exceptions. So if someone does throw a lit cigarette, they would be subject to a Class 2 traffic offense, which carries a penalty of up to $1,000. Not that that person would necessarily receive that penalty, but at least gives the court a little bit higher threshold. Under subsection 3, there is also an exception for anyone who throws or deposits human waste. That is going to be a fixed fine of $500. So those are going to be the two exceptions, and that subsection 3 will apply to A or B. The next proposed ordinance change is to 10.60.130, riding on motorcycles. This is regarding wearing a protective helmet. And my proposed changes also stemmed from state legislation. This particular bill was actually from 2015. It was one of the last bills that did not make it into the 2016 update. So this was House Bill 15-1345. And it does provide an exemption from certain traffic requirements for the riders of a three-wheel, low-speed motorcycle. They made an exception for this type of motorcycle because this type of motorcycle had three wheels, a maximum design speed of 25 miles per hour or less, a windshield, and seatbelts. So the state determined that those riders are not necessarily going to be required to wear eye protection or helmets. So that's why I've just updated the language so that it reflects the 2015 bill. The next change I'll be pointing your attention to will be 10. The next change I'll be pointing your attention to will be 10.60.180, mandatory use of a safety belt system. This was, again, originated from legislation. This was House Bill 17-1044. This created the addition of autocycles, both the definition, which is at the end of this title, and also clarified that an auto cycle is a type of motorcycle, and it provides what auto cycle drivers and passengers are required to use. So throughout Title 10, this was another, basically, bill that Ms. Young had incorporated when I inherited this project, but it specifies specifically that drivers who are under the age of 18 years are actually punished under our ordinance in accordance with 10.60.195, which just deals with drivers that are under 18. It also specifies that every driver of a motor vehicle and every driver and passenger in an auto cycle that is equipped with a safety belt system must use their safety belt system. The language just mirrors that state counterpart. The next proposed correction, and I'm almost done here, the next proposed correction is immediately below that ordinance, 10.60.190. This ordinance is a child restraint system required, and specifically, it just included the auto cycle language. There is one other thing I just want to bring to council's attention. When I drafted the staff memo for presentation on this, I had included the language that this proposed amendment excludes the term "auto cycle" from what is considered a motor vehicle. And I apologize, I intended to put "includes," so I used the wrong verbiage, but what this does is it just includes, it basically states that motor vehicle does not include motorcycles that are not auto cycles. So basically, it does include auto cycles. I apologize, the state language almost made it a double negative, so I had the wrong word in there, but we've just included it, incorporated it, as the state did as well. The next correction that I'd like, or proposed ordinance I'd like to present is 10.60.240, misuse of wireless telephone. And I'll spend a little bit of time on this because I think this is of interest to the entire body. So the language in this proposed ordinance did originate from state legislation. It was Senate Bill 17-027, which, for the state, increased the penalty for text messaging while operating a motor vehicle. We did use language that mirrored the state counterpart, that was CRS 42-4-239. We included the new penalty provision so that it conforms now with the state law, and that's under subsection D. There's also certain conduct that specifies what must be proven if someone is charged under subsection B, which specifically means that if subsection B is going to be charged by an officer, and it states, "A person shall not use a wireless telephone for the purpose of engaging in text messaging or other similar forms of manual data entry or transmission while operating a motor vehicle." It requires what must be proven. In this case, the officer will need to demonstrate that by performing this function in a manner that caused the operator to drive in a careless and imprudent manner. It basically mirrors language in what is the careless driving statute. This is important because there were some questions about this and some of the difficulties with this particular ordinance. We're sort of bound, or our hands are kind of tied, based on the state statute. So, you know, while we would like to probably go further with this, given how significant a role this has played in our community with accidents and some of the things that happened last year, where sort of the language itself has to mirror the state counterpart. What I do want to address are some of the difficulties with prosecuting this ordinance, both as it was and as it's proposed here. Myself and colleagues have prosecuted a number of these cases and a number of these charges, and more often than not, it is charged under subsection B, which requires us to prove that the individual was using a telephone for the purpose of engaging in text messaging or other forms of manual data entry or transmission. What we often see with the officers is that they will write very detailed notes about, you know, observing somebody, looking down at their device, holding their device, texting with both hands, a delayed response and starting their vehicle, like if they're waiting at a traffic signal or something else. But it is rather difficult because we have to prove that text messaging or some sort of data transmission was actually happening. So hypothetically, you know, somebody could be, I suppose, looking down at their phone and looking at a Google map, you know, not actually entering anything or transmitting any data, but just looking at a map. That, under the statute, would not be sufficient for us to be able to prosecute. So the officers have done a very good job, in particular, the traffic team has done a very good job of being very specific about the conduct that they're looking at and observing. And before they opt to charge this, they really try to make a point to say with their direct observations what they saw. Unfortunately, what we do run into is we do occasionally have witnesses to accidents and other matters who will say, "I believe this person was on their phone. I believe that they were using their phone." We can't, unfortunately, prosecute a case based on that alone because someone is allowed to talk on their phone, for instance, or use their phone if they're not texting or transmitting data. So we do have some difficulty when people say, "Well, can't you just get their phone records? Can't you just, you know, look at that and see what they were doing?" Because of sort of the condensed nature of our trials, trying to get phone records from Sprint or Verizon or AT&amp;T, and, you know, usually our speedy trial is 90 days, but trying to do that as quickly as possible is just not realistic. So this is a difficult charge. We have had a lot of defenses proposed before where people have said, "No, I was looking at a map," or "I was looking at something. I wasn't entering anything." One person said that they were, you know, fake typing, they weren't actually typing anything into the phone. So it is difficult trying to actually, you know, present these cases, but I know our traffic team in particular does a good job of trying to put as much detail as possible. Another question that was presented or asked of council was, "How can we possibly maybe strengthen this ordinance or give it some more teeth?" The only proposal I have at this time is possibly doing targeted enforcement. So I know, like, the officers, sometimes on grant, sometimes not, will do like a seatbelt, you know, operation where they look for drivers not wearing seatbelts. That is something that, you know, perhaps the police department could look into. Again, it's more difficult than even a seatbelt enforcement because you really have to be sort of at the right place, right time. You know, it's almost like you have to be next to or adjacent at the car at a stoplight, or you have to be, you know, maybe seeing a car swerving around and then noticing that they're on their phone. But it is difficult to do, but that's perhaps, right now, the best we might be able to do. I know in cases where, you know, there's serious bodily injury or SBI, or there's a lot more serious damage or injury, officers do look at getting a warrant for people's phones and looking at that content. So for our cases at the municipal level, we're not able to expend those kind of resources, but rest assured that I know for some of the more serious matters, they do look at that. Okay, one, a couple, last couple here. This would be a new ordinance. There's three total proposed new ordinances. This deals with driving under restraint and the possible penalty. This originated from state legislation, House Bill 17-1162. And this is interesting because previously, officers can only charge this particular offense into county court. So anytime we would have an officer, say, have a speeding case, you know, a simple speeding case that would normally come here, if the driver was driving under restraint, that case would have to go to county court automatically because we didn't have a charge for it, and the state did not allow municipalities to enforce it. With this House bill in 2017, they specifically gave municipalities the opportunity to enact and enforce a driving under restraint charge. This particular charge, even at the county level, has a very low fine. The fine in this case is a minimum of $15 and a maximum fine of $100. Why this would be important, though, and something that we would like to pursue, is that if somebody is convicted of driving under restraint, that conviction will ultimately go towards their habitual offender status, and it can affect their license down the road and whether or not their license is suspended, or they have to do extra to get it reinstated. So this ordinance, while it doesn't have a lot of teeth in terms of a financial penalty, it could have potentially a very significant result in terms of getting somebody to this habitual offender status, which is when somebody has three or more convictions for certain offenses, including this one, within a period of seven years. And that's something the DMV looks at very closely. So we would like the opportunity to at least try to enforce it. I also think it may divert some otherwise more minor tickets back to municipal court that are now going to county court because of that charge. Okay. And the last significant change here, 10.63.080, which is Senate Bill 17-229. This was, it was a state legislation, but this was also referred to more commonly as the moveover for CODI Act for an officer that was hit and killed in the line of duty. The state legislature in 2017 had this legislation to increase the possible penalty for drivers who failed to move over for emergency responders. The language also incorporated stationary towing carriers and stationary public utility service vehicles, which I think is important because sometimes, you know, we do see a lot of the moveover and moving over for stationary emergency vehicles pertaining to police only, or, you know, emergency vehicles like ambulances, but this would also help for towing carriers and other public utilities, like snow plows and things like that, who are also performing some of their emergency duties, especially with like a snowstorm. So this ordinance mirrors the state language that was contained in 424705, and basically provides when vehicles, who vehicles will have to move over for, includes the stationary towing carriers and the public utility vehicles, and then that language is just consistent The only other changes in the title are really cleanup changes, so I didn't include them in the staff memo. One was a spelling error under 10.68.120. Immobilization was misspelled, so I'd just like to clean that up. And then the last change was just adding the definition of "auto cycle" to our definition section, 10.75.020. That's, "auto cycle" was incorporated into three of the ordinances, so we've defined it there as well. And that concludes the proposed changes that you have before you, and I will stand by for a public comment and then answer any questions. Thank you all for your time.
Standing, very nice job. Very, very thorough. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open public comment. Nobody's indicated a wish to speak. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and ask for a motion.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance 0-2020-5 on second and final reading.
Second.
Do I need to include as amended?
Not yet.
Or as corrected?
Not at this point. We just need to add that amendment, get that voted on first, and then we'll be able to act on your motion.
Okay.
Counselor Harrison?
I just have one quick question. Excellent presentation. Thank you very much for your job. Would there be any reason to add any city truck that might be partially on the roadway for the moving over for CODI law? They wouldn't necessarily always be emergency, but they could be partly on the roadway. Is there a reason that we didn't do that, or?
So the Act itself, it defines and describes it as any public service utility vehicle, so it doesn't have to just be a snowplow or a vehicle that has its lights on. It could be anything from our streets folks, or I'm just trying to think of who might all be on the roadway, but it could be our streets folks, it could be even some of our city buses that, you know, drive around, depending on the circumstances, but basically any public service utility vehicle. So, actually, it may not, sorry, it may not actually include some of our buses. So it would include, though, like, our planning folks. It could even include some of our community resources folks when they're in their vehicles, but as long as they're providing some sort of public service utility.
What I was kind of thinking of is, from time to time, you'll see a traffic engineering truck kind of working with the stoplights and whatnot, and they're not always completely off the road. Because of what they're doing, they have to kind of do that. So I would like them to be covered by that if there's any way that we can. Keep them safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that, I mean, that's a pretty direct request that changes the...
It doesn't have to be 10.
Okay. All right.
And just sorry, in response, also, Councilmember Harrison, one thing I noticed that I didn't include in my response is that they do define the stationary authorized emergency vehicle as one that's giving a visual signal. And I know that our traffic engineering streets and some of those folks do have trucks and vehicles that have white or yellow lights that are on, so it does include any oscillating red, blue, or white lights, so someone could be cited if they didn't move over for one of those vehicles.
Hi. I just had a couple of questions. You had said the driving under restraint provision was added, that it formerly could only be prosecuted at the county court level, and I was just wondering, so then how would it be decided whether it's prosecuted at the municipal or county level?
Thank you, Ms. Springsteen. That's a good question. It would really depend on, largely on, the charges. So for instance, if it was, as I mentioned, like, a simple speeding ticket or something that's normally charged here in Lakewood Municipal Court, that would then be able to be charged, you know, in conjunction with that. If the ticket, however, was something like, let's say, a stolen vehicle and the driver was driving under restraint and there was no proof of insurance, that's a ticket that would sort of be lumped together and that would go up to either district or county court still. So I think it's going to be somewhat at the discretion of the officer because you can still charge, you know, a minor speeding ticket and this driving under restraint up at county if you choose to. I know they try to keep tickets here in municipal court if they can, but it'll really be the discretion of the officer and the nature of the charges that drives the decision.
So maybe more serious charges would go up to the county? Okay.
And just to clarify, to add in, almost all of the offenses that our officers charged can be charged into municipal court or county. So there's just a few, some of our code enforcement is what I can think of, that they don't have that discretion, it can only be charged in municipal court. So this wouldn't be something new for the officers to decide. The majority of our offenses could be charged in either court.
Okay. Thank you. And can you just explain about the habitual, what you said about that?
Yes. So, I'll just have my cheat sheet here. So in the legislation that was passed, the state discussed that, discussed a few things. One, they set the penalty provisions, but they also stated that the municipal court would not have discretion to reduce the three points. This charge does carry three points, so that was included in the red line. They also stated that any conviction of this type of charge, driving under restraint, would specifically go towards someone's habitual offender status, which they define as someone having three or more convictions for certain offenses, and those were enumerated in the statute within a period of seven years. So hypothetically, if someone had three driving under restraint convictions within seven years, it's not up for, it's not necessarily up for us to decide, but they could be labeled habitual offender, and that's something the DMV will take into consideration with their status of their license. It also can take into consideration if they get charged for something more serious under, like, a habitual offender status while driving.
Okay. And I just had a question about if people can be charged for not moving over for certain vehicles that aren't necessarily an ambulance or police. I don't know that people would be familiar with that kind of requirement, but you're saying it is at the state level required now. So people are going to have to become familiar with it, but is that a concern in any way?
So when this, a couple of things I think that is somewhat reassuring is that the state equivalent went into effect in 2017, so it has been in place for almost three years from the time that it was actually signed into law. The other piece of this is that this was a well-publicized bill. This moveover for CODI Act received a lot of press, and it received a lot of discussion by the state legislature, so... So our hope is that, you know, people would, would know about this. I know that sometimes even now, we do have a charge for failing to move over for a stationary emergency vehicle, specifically with regard to police. And when they do enforce that charge, some people are aware of it and they just said, oh, I, you know, I didn't move over or, you know, what have you. Some people aren't aware of it and the officers will take the time to educate them about the law. And so, you know, it's, it's obviously, the charging decision is up to the officer, but they will, I hope, do some, you know, education at the street level if people aren't sure about moving over for a public service utility vehicle or something along those lines.
Okay. And I just wanted to congratulate you on your presentation because it was very thorough. And it kind of strikes me that this is kind of a night and day situation for what we're going to hear later tonight. Because what I have been asking for is reasoning behind why we are changing that things we're changing and adding the things we're adding. And you had great reasoning and analysis of that. And I wish we could have that in every presentation. So thank you.
Thank you for your feedback.
So I have Counselor Gutwine Abel Bida.
Thank you, also agree. Fantastic presentation. And this, this was a hefty lift. So thank you for all the work that you put into this. I just have a follow-up question regarding the texting while driving, the 10.60.240. And so I, I understand, you know, we're, we're making this to be more similar to the state law. And, you know, basically, my question that I had asked was if there's anything additional we can do above and beyond to strengthen the texting while driving rules. I know it's a concern among our council and it's, it's been identified as a priority, as you stated. And so my, my question is, you know, I, I know that there's a bill that has been at the state a couple of times and hasn't gone through that is, my understanding is just making it illegal to be holding your cellphone, not just texting. Question is, if they are unable to pass that bill again this year, is that something that we can look at at the municipal level?
I, the answer is I wish. Part of what we would get into is there are some areas where there are issues of mixed state and local concern. And we can generally cover those as long as they're not in conflict with the state. So, you know, for instance, some of our parking ordinances where the state, you know, code is completely, you know, void of anything about that, we can sort of write our ordinances. But for this particular issue, it would be difficult to go a step further and say, you know, any handling or use of a cellphone or other electronic device would be prohibited because we would run into a situation where we're being a lot more, sort of a, a lot more specific than the state is. And it would also, you know, where there's interstate and inter jurisdiction, you know, transit and stuff like that. I don't know that we would be able to do that. I think there's a chance that could be challenged, you know, as unconstitutional under the state legislation. So if the state does pass something that's more restrictive, certainly we can get an update on the books as soon as possible. Because I know that this is something that the community, that our officers, council, that everybody would like to see. But I don't know that we can go that, that step further without the state sort of either doing something similar or stepping in.
Then I guess we should all contact our state legislators and encourage them to, to find a solution here. All right, that, that's my, that ended my questions. And I appreciate your offer or suggestion that perhaps we could do spot checks. And so I think we can, you know, continue this conversation as we go. So thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors Abel, Bida, Labir.
I have to agree with everybody that said that's a great job on a really heavy lift and very thorough. Looking to find something to at least bring up, the only thing I could was under 10.50.015, nuisance exhibition of motor vehicle exhaust prohibition. Item A, a person shall not engaged, has a D. And I don't, I think you meant to say engage in the.
Yeah, engage.
So if you'll fix that, I'll be really happy with this.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for, yeah, thank you for catching that, Councilmember Abel. And that was not on Ms. Young. That was probably my transcription, kind of writing it back over. So I apologize. It should say shall not engage, yes.
You and Ms. Young did a very capable and thorough job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Bida?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I just kind of looking at this from a public policy standpoint. As I see it, if we were not to pass this, if we were to say, no, we're not going to do that, then, then what happens is we create a two-tiered system of law in Lakewood, which then creates a lot of complications for law enforcement because now they have two different sets of law, you know, traffic laws to apply. And to make it even worse, it creates two separate, two, two different levels of law for our citizens to comply with, to, to know whether they're in compliance. So in a way, we're, we're sort of deferring to federal law, I mean, to state law on these things, even though we may not always agree that, for example, the penalty is appropriate here. Either it's too high or it's too low. But rather than confuse the waters or muddy the waters, we're just going to go along with deferring to the decisions of our able-bodied legislators, shall we say. Is that correct? Would you agree with that?
That is correct. And I think in some of these, I can tell you, if they didn't pass, officers would essentially probably have to stop writing them. I know like the bicycle lane and parking ticket, that has been something officers have shied away from since, since we haven't addressed it to this point. Same with, you know, some of the, wearing the protective eyewear or helmet if you're driving a three-wheeled motorcycle, since the state now permits that, it would be difficult for someone who's driving around to come into Lakewood and get cited, but go somewhere else and not. So you're correct, Councilmember Bida, that it would basically create enforceability issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Labir.
Thank, excuse me, thank you for the presentation and for all of your comments. To Counselor Bida's point, multiple cities choose to do different things as it relates to speed limits and other types of code violations. I'm curious, is that problematic for you? Or do you think that's an issue?
No, I know some cities elect to just adopt the model traffic code sort of as is. Lakewood has found that we've had to supplement it and change some of the provisions so that we can enforce certain things that are not mentioned in the model traffic code. But nothing, you know, from my understanding, nothing that we are passing tonight is, is frankly, you know, deviates a lot from what other cities are doing. I think we actually in some, to some extent, had some language in there that a lot of cities don't have, like the perceptible grade or what is a sufficient width. I think we almost maybe over, overwrote some of those provisions on the front end that we're now going back and realizing other cities are not. They don't have that subjectivity piece.
Okay, thank you for that. I guess to similar comments we made about the previous ordinance changes, I appreciate the changes we're making today. I think they're important, obviously, to be in line with what the state's doing. But I do think at some point in the future, it'd be great for us to take even deeper dive on more of these Title X issues because obviously there's other things that I think would be worth looking at. We've had a lot of pedestrian incidents on Colfax. The federal government has called Colorado a serious violator of air quality laws. So I think there are some preemptions that the state has gotten rid of as it relates to idling ordinances and things like that. So I think it would be great to take a look at some potential changes in the future. But I appreciate what we're doing here today. Thanks.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Mr. Cox, the amendment was mentioned?
Yeah, I think, I think what we need to do is, is just simply propose one amendment that would encompass the, the minor correction that Counselor Abel discovered. And then to, to clear up the subsection designations on 1060100. So I.
So I guess if you would read that in and if Mr. or Counselor Abel felt inclined, could say so, moved, then we could have a second on that.
Let me just get back to the section that he was talking about. So the amendment would be to amend Section 10.50.15A to replace the word engaged with engage in the first sentence of subsection A. And then there would be two changes to 1060100, and specifically subsection F, where F2 should refer to subsection B. And, or is that right, Lauren? Do I have that? Under F2, it's subsection B, correct. And under F3, it should read subsection A or C. Whereas currently reads A or B, it should read A or C. So with those changes, that would be one amendment to the ordinances already moved.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second on the stated amendment. Any conversation or discussion? Please cast your votes. Passes 10 ayes, zero nays. Mr. Cox, is that all the amendments from the?
That's everything that we talked about during the presentation.
Counselor Abel, will you then reread the motion as amended, please?
I move for the adoption of ordinance zero, or O dash 2020 dash five as amended on second and final reading.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Passes 10 ayes, zero nays. Thank you both very much. 9:53, Counselor, do you like to take 10 minutes before we go into the rezone conversation? Okay, so we're going to come back at 10:05. So a little bit longer than that. Cool, Stacey? 10:05? Thank you.
PM. And we are going to move into part two of the evening. I'll ask the clerk to please read item 13, item 14.
Item 13.
Item 13, thank you.
Item 13, ordinance 0-2020-2, rezoning land located at 3900 South Wadsworth Boulevard and 3939 South Teller Street, Lakewood, Colorado, 80235, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado.
Thank you very much. So this is a rezoning hearing. There is a written sheet titled "Rezoning Hearings Procedures" at the city council meetings on green paper available on the table by the entrance to the city council chambers. For those of you who may be unfamiliar with the steps we follow in conducting this sort of hearing, we don't see them a lot. You are welcome to get a copy of this information at any time. All persons present should be advised that the city council has received and reviewed the written findings and recommendations of the planning commission in this manner. We have also received a notice that the entire record is available for review by members of the council. The city council must consider only the record before the planning commission, the written findings, and the recommendations of the planning commission, any previously filed written objections to those findings and recommendations, and the comments relating to them made during this hearing. Any persons who wishes to speak will be limited to the three-minute time period, and we will go ahead and start. And I think our applicant is here. Is that who we're starting with in the presentation? So I will please welcome Jason.
Yes, thank you.
Monforton, is that correct?
Perfect.
All right.
That's a rarity. Good evening. My name is Jason Monforton. I'm a civil engineer with Dewberry, and I'm here representing the property owner, Vista Buena Holdings, on the matter of rezoning 3900 South Wadsworth Boulevard and 3939 South Teller Street. Make sure I... All right. As a brief introduction, what we're looking at is Lot 1 and Lot 2 of the Academy Park Planned Development, or PD. It's a 13-and-a-half-acre parcel, and its current zoning is planned development with an underlying mixed-use employment or suburban MES designation. Currently, Lot 1 is an office building with 175,000 square feet of space and 518 parking spaces. Lot 2 is strictly a parking lot with 307 parking spaces, the combined total being 825 parking spaces. Our objective tonight is to rezone Lot 1 to an MES designation. That's about 12 acres of area. Really, this is to allow for a reduction in the required parking for the development and to get current zoning requirements that have a requirement of five stalls per 1,000 square feet and to reduce that. MES zoning allows for 1.5 to five stalls per 1,000 square feet. This reduction in the number of parking stalls would be required for the office complex to allow this different use on Lot 2. This frees up more than 200 consistently vacant parking spaces, as we'll demonstrate later in the presentation. So in essence, what we're asking to do is rezone so that an unused portion of parking lot can be used for a better product for the community. We're going to rezone Lot 2, as I just stated, to MRS, which is mixed residential and suburban. This is designed to help create a development opportunity for the vacant parking lot that's not being used, and by proposing single-family attached dwelling units. The reconfiguration for Lot 2 and the development of approximately 30 to 31, really 31 attainable townhomes is our projected use. So, and I'm sorry, this slide was what I was just reading about. This is just a picture of the existing building, but we want to go over the constraints of the current PD. This stringent parking requirement is, again, five spaces per 1,000 square feet, requiring 770 spaces. Only 620 of the spaces are typically utilized over the past 20 years, with the building historically having an approximately 90% occupancy. So, very full building, but yet we're still not using the amount of parking that's out there. We believe this is due to many factors, some of which might be telecommuting, Uber, public transit, all these things that can play into people not needing to be in an office space that was planned, you know, 40 years ago for what the parking requirements might be. The PD with underlying MES does allow for many uses, medical, dental, et cetera, but one of the uses it already is zoned for is residential uses. So we're not really asking to change what could be done there, just the amount of spaces that are required to be provided for the existing building. Again, this PD is over 40 years old, and the trends towards change in the community are fairly apparent. I think you've seen an increased amount of requests for rezoning in this area, and some of the examples would be the Pinehurst Apartments directly to the south of us, the assisted living facility, and self-storage that have been recently approved. These slides are basically views of the existing building, the first one being looking west from Teller Street to the building. In the foreground, you can see the empty parking lot that we're talking about. And the next picture on the right is the views looking southeast from the office building. Again, you can see the parking lot that's unused, kind of looking out from the building. The following slides are a brief encapsulation of many that we've pulled up, and I have quite a few supporting slides at the end of this if there are questions or you need more information. But we've taken pictures from Google Earth of the aerials of the area. And what you're going to see in the next four slides and 10 more that I could provide, but in the interest to save some time, we've kind of condensed it. What you see is a fairly consistent amount of cars parking in the main parking lot on Lot 1, which we intend to leave unchanged. But Lot 2 is never used. So these slides are from 1999, 2007. We go forward to 2010, 2014. Again, Lot 2's parking area completely unused. And then we go on to 2016 and 2018, various times of the year. Again, no parking in Lot 2.
The main parking area in front of the building is not at capacity for its use in the area that we're talking about doing rezoning on the...
Yeah, okay. Well, I've moved past it. All right. Great to hear my own voice. The... By allowing us to rezone Lot 2 to this MRS, what it allows is attached single-family residential units to be created. It'll... The requirements that go with this are 30% open space minimum, which is a much more appealing use, rather than a heat sink of a parking lot and black asphalt that nobody's utilizing at this point. We're going to see some grass and some open space for the community. It'll enhance the pedestrian connectivity. It'll improve some of the community aesthetics. I think, certainly my opinion, and I would hope anybody's, that this product is very attractive, and we've had great success, the builders had great success throughout the area, including Lakewood, in building this type of townhome. This will meet or exceed building frontage and setback requirements with the zoning, and we're providing a mixed-use residential and commercial and live-work opportunities because people can live much closer to where they are potentially working. This is just some more pictures, a little close-up of the type of product we're building. It's very attractive and has been extremely popular throughout the metro area. When we went to planning commission, this project was approved unanimously, is my understanding, but planning commission asked us to look into three things to do a little deeper dive to give them further clarity. First one, traffic patterns with the schools nearby and the associated gate closure at South Teller Street and Pierce Street intersections. What we've done is we've worked with staff and we've kind of done our own research to try to understand the traffic patterns that are out there, some of the problems and issues that have been experienced at the times that people are dropping off children at schools and picking them up. There's very little we can do about that. Those schools are going to generate the traffic that they do at those times, but we've had a traffic engineer who certainly can come up to answer questions, do an evaluation of what effects our 31-townhome subdivision will have. This has been very... On an engineering front, it's imperceptible. Traffic patterns will not be negatively impacted by the use that we're proposing. Unfortunately, although we would support removing the gate that closes off Teller Street, it's controlled by the city and county of Denver. That's their right-of-way. At this time, they have not seemed willing to work on that problem, but we would support any way we could trying to get that removed. We've just had no more luck than the city of Lakewood has had. It's my understanding from staff that they'd be more than willing to have that discussion with Denver in the future to try to convince them, but at this time, we just don't have the power to change it. Second thing we were asked to look into was the feasibility to develop the remainder of the property, or Lot 1, after this rezoning is approved. I think really the point of that question was to make sure that there's no unintended consequences that this rezoning could lead to something that the council planning commission didn't intend. It's my understanding that the owners of the building have invested quite a bit into the viability of this commercial property. They intend to keep doing so. In fact, they told me that 100% of the proceeds from the sale of this parcel to the home builder will go back into the building, kind of showing their further commitment to keep this property a viable commercial property for some time into the future. Obviously, I can't predict what happens decades from now, but their intent is to keep as-is. It's cost prohibitive to change anything, and in the future, if they wanted to come in with a new plan, they would need to come before staff, planning commission, and you guys to get acceptance for future approvals of any major changes to their property. Planning commission also asked us to justify the average, that the average employee in the area could afford this product. If we're really promoting a live-work environment, can people afford to live here? Now, later on, we have some slides, if you'd like to see them, with more specifics, but in general, what we found is we performed a metro study, which is an unbiased company that evaluates what's going on in the area as far as the economics and the, for home sales. What we found is that there have not been many new home purchases in the area, but there have been a lot of resales, leading us to believe that there just aren't a lot of new products in this price range in the area. The apartment complex just to the south of us is offering three-bedroom, two-bath, and one garage stall for a rental price in the range between $2,900 and $3,540 a month. Now, they are, again, very occupied, so they're obviously having success with that, showing that there's a demand to live in the area. We did analysis on our three-bedroom, three-bath, two-car garage units, and if a person puts down the minimum 5%, they would end up having a mortgage at approximately $2,300 a month. So a savings of $600 a month that goes right into residents' pockets to spend elsewhere in the area, and we think that's a great thing. I mean, anytime you can replace the pride of homeownership and having that and augment what apartments are doing, but yet do it at a cheaper price, we believe that's a great benefit to the area. So we wanted to address a little bit about the compliance with Lakewood's comprehensive plan. The requested rezoning is in compliance with your comprehensive plan, with the goals to promote a mixed-use developments, which this would do. We have a commercial use existing, and we'd like to put residential use coupled with it. The rezoned property would include, again, this office, which we will not be changing, and this new residential use. Improved redevelopment opportunities in the growth of the areas, you know, we're not seeing a lot of new product in the area, but this private investment for the 31 attainable homes does offer up a chance to own and live in the area. The enhanced community connectivity is another part of the goal. We'll be creating connections to Teller Street and to other rights-of-way so that people can get where they want with sidewalks, public sidewalks, and, again, promoting that live-work so you're working in the area that you live, you don't have to commute from far away. Community benefits of the rezoning. Missed one there, didn't I? Ooh. How do I go backwards?
Try right-clicking the mouse. Did you press?
There we go. Thank you. Community benefits of rezoning. This allows for a better use of this vacant and, to be honest, unattractive asphalt parking lot. That sounds a little weird from a civil engineer. I've spent my life designing parking lots, but to be honest, there are, if they're not being used, there are much better uses for them, and I believe this is one of them. This enables other beneficial land use opportunities to enhance the community with our open space and the residential units, promotes redevelopment and creates open space. We're required to produce 30% open space. The pedestrian connectivity, which we discussed, and improved neighborhood aesthetics with quality architectural features. This creates a mixed use within the area and is consistent with neighborhood zoning and land uses, and it supports the changing character of the neighborhood as evidenced by the recent zoning requests in the area. I went over the compliance. This is basically a picture of what could be if this is approved. And again, in, in our opinion, it does offer a much more aesthetic and appealing look to an area when the parking lot is all that's there and it's not being used. That concludes my presentation. I'm absolutely happy to answer any questions. We also have some team members that can answer questions. I also have a whole slew of slides, again, that can be brought up to help answer any questions you have.
Great. Thank you very much. We're going to move into the staff presentation, and I'll ask Ms. Brea Pafford, our case planner, to come forward. Good evening.
Councilors, my name is Brea Pafford, and I'm a staff planner here at the City of Lakewood. And I will be presenting staff's presentation for rezoning case RZ 19001. This is located at 3,900 South Wadsworth Boulevard and 3939 South Teller Street. The applicant is proposing to rezone Lot 1 and 2 of the Academy Park filing 5 and 6 Lot Line Adjustment Platt from planned development with an underlying mixed-use employment suburban zoning to a split-zone district that would include mixed-use employment suburban and mixed-use residential suburban as depicted on this slide. Article 2 of the Lakewood zoning ordinance sets forth the process for all rezoning proposals within the city. This process includes a pre-planning application, neighborhood meeting, the formal rezoning request, and as well as two public hearings, the first before the Planning Commission and the second before the spotty city council. Planning cases require a public hearing must follow procedural requirements defined in the Lakewood zoning ordinance. Notice requirements for this hearing were satisfied by sending notification to 646 owners and tenants of properties located within 500 feet of the project boundary. Notifications were also mailed to four neighborhood and business organizations that were located within one-half mile of the property boundary. And then the notice was also published in a newspaper of record, as well as posted on the property here at Lakewood Civic Center, as well as on the Lakewood website. Numerous letters of support were submitted to staff prior to the Planning Commission hearing, and those have been included as part of the record in your packets. The image on the left depicts the site located at the southeast corner of Mansfield Avenue and Wadsworth Boulevard. The larger aerial image on the right depicts the location of the subject site in context with the remainder of the Academy Park PD Zone District, and that is located south of Hampton Avenue and west of, excuse me, east of Wadsworth Boulevard. The existing site conditions include the multi-story office building and two blocks of surface parking, which is divided by a private shared driveway. According to the city's building permit records, the office building was constructed in 1973, which predates the 1978 approval of the Academy Park Plan Development zoning. Access to the site is taken from West Mansfield Avenue. The site has sloping topography with a majority of the property being located about 20 feet below the South Wadsworth Boulevard roadway. Adjacent land uses include schools, mini storage, office, and multifamily developments. As previously mentioned, the site's currently zoned planned development with an underlying MES zoning, which allows for a range of residential as well as non-residential land uses. The properties located to the northeast and east of the subject property have the same planned development zoning. The property directly north of the site was rezoned in 2019 to mixed-use general suburban, and the property to the south is zoned mixed-use employment suburban, as depicted here. The primary long-range planning document for guiding land use decisions like this rezoning request is the Lakewood 2025 Moving Forward Together Comprehensive Plan. The plan includes vision statement, guiding principles, goals, and action steps, as well as a growth area map. The subject site is located within the Mission Trace and Academy Park Growth Area, which is one of seven growth areas identified within our comprehensive plan. The land use designation within the growth area applies to this site is for mixed-use office, and the growth area summary states that the Academy Park area will continue to develop with a mix of non-residential as well as residential land uses. The applicant is proposing two separate zone districts for the rezoning request. The majority of the site is proposed to be rezoned to the existing underlying MES Zone District, which will continue to support the existing office land use and will allow for a reduction in the number of required parking spaces in order to accommodate the proposed townhome development. The intent of the ME Zone District is outlined in the Lakewood zoning ordinance is to provide for office and campus development with ancillary retail and residential uses along arterial and collector streets. The intent of the MR Zone District is to allow for compact multifamily residential development with a variety of densities, and this district will also allow for office and retail uses as long as they are integrated into a residential development. On this slide, I've provided a use comparison chart, which shows, which shows the uses based on the proposed zone districts. The first column lists the uses currently permitted within the PD as well as that underlying MES Zone District. The uses that are in red are those that are currently permitted within the planned development that will either no longer be allowed if this rezoning request is approved, or they will just require a special use approval from the Lakewood Planning Commission before that use would be, could be established. The uses listed in the second column are those that are permitted within the mixed-use residential Zone District. Several non-residential uses are allowed, however, those uses do have limitations in the amount of gross floor area that is permitted. This chart reflects the dimensional development standards within each zone district. The information in the first column reflects the requirements in the MES Zone District with the standards from the, from the planned development shown in gray adjacent to it. The second column reflects the standards in the MRS Zone District, and some of the key changes that would occur if this rezoning were to be approved includes a reduction in the total building height from 100 feet to a maximum of 60 feet with both of the proposed zone districts, a slight reduction in the required open space, which will range from 20 to 30% depending on the land use in the zone district. The MRS will require a minimum density of five dwelling units per acre for any new residential development, and based on the adopted 2018 zoning ordinance amendments from the Lakewood Development Dialogue Process, a residential use within the MES Zone District is now restricted to a maximum of 50% of the building's total gross floor area. As presented by the applicant, this is the conceptual land use plan, and it shows the two proposed zone districts depicted in different shades of gray, the conceptual townhome development pattern, and modifications to the remaining surface parking lot. The red arrows indicate the proposed access points. The zoning ordinance sets forth specific review criteria that is required for rezoning approval. First, there must be conformance with the intent of the Lakewood zoning ordinance. Second, the applicant must demonstrate compatibility with surrounding land uses or those land uses envisioned within the comprehensive plan. And finally, one of the three following must be met. The rezoning must promote the implementation of the comprehensive plan, or there must be a material change in the neighborhood such that that rezoning would be in the public interest, or finally, the initial rezoning was, was found to be in error. With respect to the first criteria, the proposed rezoning supports the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance for the following reasons. It promotes health, safety, and welfare through a mix of uses within walking distance, encourages orderly development through a public process, provides an opportunity for a range of housing types, it accommodates effective integration of a mixture of land uses within the surrounding land uses, and also supports redevelopment potential, and it promotes a mixture of commercial and residential land uses within the mixed-use zone districts. With respect to compatibility, the MES and MRS Zone Districts are compatible with the land uses envisioned within the comprehensive plan, and those land uses within those two proposed zone districts are also compatible with the surrounding office, multifamily, mini storage, and institutional land uses that currently exist in Academy Park. The proposed rezoning promotes implementation of the comprehensive plan because the subject is within the Mission Trace Academy Park Growth Area. It will, the rezoning will support the vision expressed by the comprehensive plan by enhancing commercial mixed-use districts with quality working, living, shopping, and dining experiences. It will promote commercial and mixed-use investment and reinvestment within a designated growth area. It will provide opportunities for additional residential uses within the Academy Park area, and it will ensure coordination of services with utility and service providers early in this development process. Second, in addition, there's also evidence of a material change within the growth area through the following. To begin with, there's a multifamily development that was recently constructed to the south of the subject site. Second, the Travelers Express Moneygram Office Building, which is located to the east of the site, was converted to the Adam Brook Classical Academy K-12 Charter School. And finally, the rezoning request from PD to MGS was recently approved by city council to the north of the subject site to repurpose the vacant office building into self-storage On September 4th, 2019, the Lakewood Planning Commission held a public hearing and adopted the findings of fact and orders presented in the staff report. The commission found that the proposed rezoning promotes the purpose of the zoning ordinance as stated in Section 17.1.2, that it's compatible with the existing surrounding land uses or those land uses envisioned in the comprehensive plan, that it promotes the implementation of the comprehensive plan, and that there has been a material change in the neighborhood. The Lakewood Planning Commission recommends that city council approve rezoning case RZ 19001, and if desired, city council may also choose to adopt the resolution attached to the staff report. If, if adopted, the resolution would authorize the voluntary development agreement between the property owner and the city. The agreement would add further assurances that the 2.3-acre MRS property is developed with the attached dwelling unit or townhome land uses as presented tonight by the applicant. It would also restrict other land uses that would otherwise be permitted within the MRS Zone District. This concludes staff presentation for rezoning case RZ 19001, and I will be available for any questions that the council might have.
Thank you. Nice job. All right, I'll now open the public comment portion of this. Nobody's signed up to speak. Seeing none, I will close public comment. I will also mention that there were, I think, 12 or 13 comments on Lakewood Speaks to make those known with, yep, and then I think one came in late this afternoon that Ms. Mallard put up here for us. So there were some, some folks who were able to weigh in online and, and didn't have to come in tonight. So I'm going to hold off, I think, on making the motion. We can go to just questions and, and comments. I will start with, with just one comment that was brought up about the gate, and the gate is, is something of a challenge, you know, with this development or without this development, and it is purely in Denver's hands, and there is some conversations, frankly, on the political level, because it really lies at the political level of trying to see if Denver will engage in that conversation. I do have a meeting coming up with the council member in that district, but can't make any guarantees, and honestly, at this point, I don't, I'm not very positive about that opportunity. They're pretty protective of it, but it, it should lend itself to a better conversation, so I wanted to throw that out there. Counselor Harrison and Counselor Gutwin, since that's Ward 5, I'll start with.
Thank you. Excellent presentations from both of you. This particular area is pretty dense already with all kinds of different things going around there, but it is also in a growth area in Lakewood. I think this is a perfect use for this particular piece of property in the fact that, especially if we can add the voluntary commitment, I would like to see that added. I'd feel much more comfortable with that, with, with approving this, but this is exactly what needs to go in that particular area, I believe, and as long as we can try to keep it attainable in terms of cost, I'm, I'm really supporting this idea. Thank you.
Counselor Gutwin.
Thank you. I echo actually both of what Mayor Paul and Counselor Harrison said, and I would love to see some progress in move, taking down the, that gate. So my best wishes to you at that meeting. And just to, to kind of reiterate some of what was said here, and then I also want to take the opportunity to mention some of the comments that we received from Lakewood Speaks, but you know, this, this is in a growth area, and as mentioned, it's right next to Mission Trace that has some small and local businesses there that could really benefit from, you know, some additional activity in the area and additional investment in that area. It was unanimous from Planning Commission. That's kind of rare these days, so that's, you know, noteworthy, I think. To me, what's really exciting about this is that it is an opportunity for housing that's more attainably priced. It is remarkable that these days, three, in the 300s, is the new attainable in, in Denver metro, but that's, that's the reality. And so here's the, some of the things I just wanted to mention that were in Lakewood Speaks from Lakewood residents. We got comments from someone who works here, can't afford to live here, they're a healthcare provider, they support this project, the comments from seniors who have lived in Lakewood for 20-plus years that want to downzone, stay in Lakewood, there's just, you know, not really any options for that, young families looking to build equity, and full-time working professionals that want a low-maintenance option. So that's pretty much, you know, all, all different kinds of people that could really benefit from this type of housing, and it is very exciting to find the right fit for that and to have not, not a lot of people here showing up to tell us to vote against it. Is it also a good sign? So I encourage you all to, to join us in supporting this investment in Ward 5, and then I would agree that I would like to take advantage of that, you know, authorize the optional resolution so that we can ensure that this is what we envision. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Abel.
Thank you. I do have some just informational questions. Want, how many parcels are in this PD?
That's a big PD, I think.
There, there's two lots, oh, within the entire PD.
PD.
Hmm, that's a good question. Let me see if I.
Let me give you, take a minute and, and get an answer for you, and I'll, I'll be right back.
A little warning, I'm also going to know, want to know how many different owners have those parcels in their inventory. 30% open space, that doesn't necessarily mean vegetation, does it?
That's correct. The way the zoning ordinance defines open space, it can include sidewalks as well as some other paved areas, as long as they don't have a, a covered roof over them.
Driveways and that sort of thing.
It would not include driveways. We do not count that towards open space, or, or parking spaces either.
This application says it will assure commercial, does that, that refers only to the existing office buildings? Those will always be, those will be assured at present.
Correct.
But the parcel 2 could or, could not have commercial on it, is that correct?
The MRS zoning would require a residential land use. However, they can incorporate some non-residential land uses into that development on a limited basis, so we limit the, the size of those.
One of my concerns is the school day traffic over there. It's, it's very difficult. I don't think I'd take my big Dodge pickup. I don't think I'd take my big Dodge pickup truck on that street. And we're going to add 40 to 50 cars. Is there any mitigation being done to alleviate that congestion?
Can I defer that question to the traffic engineer?
Of course.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Chris McGrathahan. I'm a traffic engineer with LSC Transportation Consultants, and we did do a traffic study for this. At the time we did the traffic study, we weren't sure if, you know, we knew that there'd be questions, are these really going to be townhomes? Could you do something else in the new zone? And so our traffic study looked at two possible land use scenarios. One would be kind of a limited daycare use, and one was what we're proposing, some townhomes. We actually had a few more at the time. We had 34 in our traffic study. And what we found was that the townhomes or the daycare would add a considerable amount of traffic, but the townhomes in the morning peak hour, when all that school traffic comes in, these townhomes will add less than 1% traffic. So the traffic at Mansfield and Teller will increase by less than 1% from these, that was when we had 34 townhomes. So if it's 31, it'll be even slightly less. We did look at Mansfield and Teller. We worked with staff. Toni's here today. She can come up and vouch for me if we need to. But we looked at, what happens if you made that intersection an all-way stop? Right now, it's a two-way stop. So the directions that don't have to stop work a little bit better because they don't have to yield. The all-way stop might work great during the peak hours of the school, but it's just not warranted enough of the day to make it worth putting in from traffic engineering standards. Similar tale for the traffic signal. The traffic signal could work, make the school traffic work better, but for the other 23 hours of the day, in the summer, weekends, everyone would be, why did we put this signal in? I have to stop when I didn't before. So what we came up with was that both an all-way stop and a traffic signal aren't warranted enough of the day to put those in. We just, we can't justify them from a traffic engineering standpoint, and staff agreed. And so we proposed all those things, but with working with staff, we just realized that just the data didn't support it. And so the fact that the, by tying this to where it's only townhomes, that resolution that we're talking about, maybe you're talking about tonight, that is the way we say, okay, this is going to be the townhomes. It's not going to be the daycare or some other use. And we're confident that if it is what we're proposing, the increase in traffic is so minimal that it just wouldn't be recognizable to the public. They're not going to see a half a second increase in delay. It's imperceptible. You wouldn't be able to perceive that.
What grade are those streets at now?
The level of delay? Is that what you're asking?
I understand streets are classified according to A, B, C, D, E, F label.
Sure, sure.
Or no E, I guess, but A, B, C, D, F.
So what our study showed is when you come in off of Wadsworth down Mansfield and you come to Teller, there's a stop sign. The left and the through lane is shared. That has a poor level of service. It's an F. The right turn, which is what some of the school traffic uses, does not fail because it's a right turn, and right turns usually work much better. The traffic, the westbound approach to that intersection also has a poor level of service. So basically, any of the left turns or through movements at the stop signs work pretty poorly for about 20 minutes, 30 minutes, depending on the day. But the right turns work okay, and of course, the traffic on Teller doesn't stop, so it works okay.
1% doesn't help a failing grade on those streets.
Well, another thing that's important to note is that the school, the parents coming in, the employee, all the employment centers in this area, everyone's coming in in the morning. Everyone's coming in off Wadsworth. Our folks are going to be leaving in the morning. So that helps too. It kind of balances out a little bit more. In other words, we're not piling on the worst movements. We're putting traffic on the movements that aren't as bad.
So the traffic that leaves in the morning will be directed to flow a different way?
It'll go north on-
But it doesn't interfere with the school, with the F ratings on those streets already?
Yeah, so the two primary movements our traffic will take is when they're leaving the site, they would go north on Teller and then take a left to go west on Mansfield. So that's not a stop condition. In the evening, when they come home, they'll make that right turn from the stop sign, but it's the right turn from the stop sign. It's not the left or the through. Now, if we're lucky, Teller will be opened up at Pierce, and they'll be able to go that way too, because that would be a viable option if that happens. But without that, our traffic would go out through Mansfield.
You mentioned that this will enable other beneficial land use opportunities. That's a bit vague. What do you envision?
I don't know if that's a question for me, is it? So anybody else want to take that one? I can answer all the traffic questions, but-
That's good. We appreciate that.
I said, thank you very much. Good answers.
While he's looking for that, are there any other?
There are quality architectural elements. Do you have any concept of what those might be yet? I mean, I understand they might come later. And why does Denver love that gate so much?
So I can't, maybe you can speak to your friend, Mr. Flynn, but I'm not, there's certainly a neighborhood on the other side that does have an entrance and that does cause some problems. And I don't want to misrepresent by any means that we have any chance of opening that gate. It's just a conversation, and in fact, honestly, a conversation I think Denver would rather not have also.
And as for Mr. Flynn, you know, he's the next journalist. What can I say?
And I'm Stephen Sundberg with Creekside Communities. He's checking on the first reference. I do believe it was just an opportunity by removing the parking to provide the townhomes. But ultimately, it's a contemporary, modern design. We do have two designs that are over in Green Mountain, so Green Mountain Terrace is one and Dakota Terrace is another. Really nice kind of brick finish to it. We like to use a lot of materials, a lot of pop-outs, nothing flat about the roof. We do try to provide a little bit more quality into these townhomes than what you typically see, so.
And to try to clarify, when you had asked about enabling the other beneficial land uses, I think that was trying to tie into, and I apologize for the confusion, tying into the pedestrian connectivity, the other things that go with not being an unused parking lot. So not other uses that would determine a building type of use, more of the-
Just about anything would be beneficial when compared to a parking lot, an empty parking lot.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
So the ownership question, I do not have an answer for you. So the original PD as a whole was 44 parcels. And roughly, if you continue Teller down and kind of divide the PD in a southern third and a northern two-thirds, there are roughly 12 parcels on the southern piece that have become two. So you've taken 12. Eight of the properties became one project, the group residential project. Four of the properties became the apartment project, and then you have all the, let's see, 12 from 44, the other 32 to the north. And I'm not sure of the ownership mix of the north, but I can tell you the ownership mix of those 12 in the south that are now two, you've got two different owners down there.
And those have developed under the PD. They were originally 44 parcels. Now they're half dozen or so.
Correct.
Okay. So this wouldn't be a major alteration to the PD as it exists now?
No.
Okay, thank you. Don't be so anxious, Ms. Gutwin. I think I'm going to go for this one. We did reject the plan down there on Wadsworth Close for very good reasons, but this seems to be much more well-thought-out and a better use of that property, so. Got you.
Counselor Labir, then Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. I'm just trying to anticipate a few questions I'm probably going to get about this. One is, if it's already PD MES, why the need to go to MES?
The primary reason is because the MES has the range in parking from the 1.5 to 5. The PD has a minimum of 5, so to keep the, you know, what would remain of the office building complex and the remaining parking compliant, the MES is the rezoning that can accomplish that while still staying somewhat true to the land uses envisioned, as well as some of the amendments to the MES Zone District that were made through the Lakewood Development Dialogue Process to ensure non-residential uses for a portion.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess the other question is probably, the MRS added in to this parcel, it kind of feels like spot zoning, so what's, why is it not that?
The planning directors' thoughts on this are that the mixed-use zone districts, you know, we have mixed-use neighborhood, mixed-use residential, mixed-use employment, they all allow a mixture of uses. The mixed-use general probably has the largest list of allowed uses, and as long as you're maintaining the mixed use, that you're still kind of keeping it not considered spot zoning because we're just pushing and pulling a few of those uses.
Thanks.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you for your presentation. Actually, the product that you are showing us, I think, is very nice. People would like to see architecture that is timeless, and it looks like you've got a sensitivity to that, not some of the block buildings that are going up on I-25. Just a couple of comments. The traffic, I think, really is an issue when the school comes. When I was reading through the packet, apparently people are stacked up, almost even into Wadsworth, trying to make that turn to get in. So it is a problem. I hope that somehow you can try to address that a little bit better, because frankly, adding more density is not going to make it better. When I was looking through the packet also, the school district did not weigh in. Do you, would you please comment on that, or what's going on with that, that they didn't? Do you know?
During the Planning Commission hearing, there were several representatives from both the district, as well as parents of students that go there that spoke, and those comments are incorporated into the minutes from that Planning Commission hearing. I believe the applicant also tried to reach out. Do you guys want to speak a little bit about that?
Again, Stephen, Creekside Communities. So overall, it was kind of the same response we got back through the Planning Commission. It wasn't necessarily about the traffic as much as it was the gate closure in a way that affected them. I do understand the two are kind of tied without separating them, but it was more about the gate closure, not necessarily about our project. We did reach out to the schools, trying to set up more or less a PTA-type meeting that we could meet with some of those people. Again, anything we can do, we're willing to support it, but it was more of a pushback to say, unless that gate's getting removed, we don't really care to hear the pitch, is kind of where it was left off, so.
The gate is a problem. I drove down there and drove all around, and I'm not optimistic that Denver's going to change its stand on that. And I'm not sure how we ever ended up in a situation where we've got the gate on Lakewood property and they've got the authority to open and close it. Somehow, there was a problem when that was first done, and I want to say it was done, what, 20, 30 years ago or more? I can't recall, because I had heard. And, yeah, that was a real problem. Let's see here. Also, in reading through this, it sounds like the first meeting that you had, there was one person that came.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, that's unfortunate. And then you reached out beyond, and a lot of the addresses I noticed are way out there. And frankly, the piece that we got today, the gentleman lives in Belmar.
And I do believe the gentleman today actually reached out to us because he was the one person who did attend the community meeting and then followed up with us this morning and said, I know you guys told me to make sure to follow up. When the Planning Commission and City Council came around, I wasn't able to do so. I tried to get something on Lakewood Speaks, and luckily, he was able to send an email in. Separate of that, all I can tell you is that we did gear it toward businesses in the area. There weren't a lot of residences to go to.
I noticed that, a lot of them, the comments, yeah.
So, unfortunately, regardless of how the community was put together, we did want to do our best to try to gain its support, so.
Okay, just an editorial comment. When we get numerous letters regarding anything, a rezoning or whatever, and when they are exactly the same language, you know, when I was in the legislature, I just blew them off, to be honest with you. If you don't have the time to write something personally, then it's not worth my time to read it. But I did read through all of these, and there was one from Littleton. But the public needs to understand that if you're going to reach out to an elected official, do it on a personal level, rather than having these rubber stamp communication. They don't go well with me. Maybe with everybody else, they're okay, but not with me.
I do appreciate the input. Consideration for next time, absolutely.
Yeah, I guess that's all I have to say. I am very concerned about the gate. That is a gate changer for this whole community. But your product looks very nice, and I appreciate that there is going to be grass down there. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so before I ask for a motion, just clarification. So the motion would be to accept, to approve Ordinance 2020-2, but then where is the resolution, or how would that motion then be made?
It would be, firstly, it's dependent upon the approval of the rezoning. So if you have the ordinance, and for whatever reason it didn't pass, we wouldn't be dealing with the resolution. But if it does pass the rezoning ordinance, then we would just need a motion to approve the resolution that's in the packet. Looking to see the, it's, yeah, it's unnumbered, so we need to attach a number to, according to the packet, it's just 2020-blank. I'm not sure. But yeah, simply a motion to approve that resolution, although I did notice as we were going through it tonight that the resolution in the next-to-last-whereas clause has tonight's date as the date of approval of the rezoning. The agreement itself has a January date in it, so we just want to make those-
From their original, that was the night they were going to originally be here, and we extended it?
That's correct.
Okay. Counselor Abel, will you at least kick us the first round and see if that passes?
First one's easy. I move for the adoption of Ordinance O-2020-2 on second and final reading, based on the findings of fact of the Planning Commission on September 4th, 2019.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. That passes 10 ayes, zero nays. That's work. And then-
The resolution would be 2020-12.
Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 2020-12.
Second.
So the motion is second on 2020-12, and it would just be basically stated that it would be approved today? That doesn't need to be a secondary amendment to that?
Yeah, I think as the part of the-
Amended to reflect today's date.
Correct, okay.
And it's still Monday.
And just for the record, the agreement refers to the effective date, which with the resolution would be essentially today, so.
So let's just be super clean. Just remove your second in the original, and we'll start over.
I'll remove my second.
I move for the approval of Resolution 20-20-12 as amended with today's date, February 24th, 2020, as the effective date.
Yeah, I think that's, that'll work.
Second.
The motion is second. Counselor Johnson, you have a comment?
Yes, I do. I just want to make sure that we do not overlook the development or developer agreement. That's, that's an important piece as well. Is that what we're doing now? Perfect, okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All right, that passes 10 ayes, zero nays. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Bria, Paul, thank you. Go forth and do great things. Go forth and do great things. 11 o'clock on the dot. So, general business, we've, we've heard a little bit about this, this evening and some, you know, heard about it at public comment, and essentially, the best advice would be to have an executive session to discuss the legal things before us, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, in the aftermath of, of the last meeting regarding this, this subject, we, and that is, of course, the wireless facilities, I should be more specific on the record here. Following that meeting, based on some contacts that we had with industry representatives who are concerned about the status of the situation, conferred with special counsel, Mr. Felman, and we proposed a, a course of action through confidential privileged memo to the council. And that included placing an agenda item on tonight's agenda under the theory that if it's there, it can be dealt with or not. If it's not there, it can't be dealt with. And specifically included the language discussion and possible action. That's based on a, a well-known court case in Colorado, that if you say discussion and you take action without having authorized action, that can be a problem. So it's, it's on there to allow for discussion of some issues that special counsel, Mr. Felman and I, thought needed to be addressed. As the mayor has suggested, the, the ideal and appropriate way to deal with those issues and to explain those issues is through executive session because there are some legal things that need to be clarified for the council. I don't think it'll take very long to reiterate what those issues are and answer questions about them, but I think we should, our recommendation, recommendation would be that we have a, a brief executive session.
And just to reiterate, this doesn't change the body of what we have postponed until April. This has to do with a narrow, a narrow portion of a, a third piece that actually was not noticed to be taken, have action taken on anyways previously.
At the last meeting.
At the last meeting. And so no decisions are made in executive session. If anything were to come out of that, we come back, we don't adjourn, we come back and, and have a public conversation about that.
And just to follow up on that, Mr. Mayor, I think it's, it's fair to say that the subject matter we're dealing with is, concerns the period of time between now and the April date and not with what happens after that.
Counselor Abel?
Mayor, I move we go into an executive session pursuant to section 2.15, parent C, parents four of the Lakewood Home Rule Charter, and section 24-6-402, parents four, parents B of the Colorado Revised Statutes, for the purposes of discussing matters of attorney-client privilege with the city attorney and the city's special counsel regarding possible action on new and pending wireless facility permit applications. I further move that we return to open session from the executive session for the purpose of taking any necessary action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Counselor Springsteen. This is to the motion of executive session.
I guess I don't understand why we're making this motion, why this issue is on the agenda at this point. We already made a decision on the 10th, and we gave direction as counsel. We understood that there were potential litigation issues at that time. I assume that the wireless industry wants to continue working in a conciliatory manner with the city, and I think we should stop scaring the community all the time about that we're gonna get sued if we stand up to industry in any way. So I, I object to moving on with this. We're at 11 o'clock. We were supposed to check in at 10 o'clock on whether we were supposed to continue this meeting, and so I was going to make a motion that we move this off the agenda because it shouldn't be on the agenda, but I don't know if I can make that motion with a pending motion on this other issue.
So the, the motion on the floor is to go into an executive session, and that's purely within council's discretion if they want to. I want to be real cautious about having public conversations. We've been advised, we've been advised publicly, and so again, this doesn't change what we've asked the community to engage in, but there is a piece that was advanced that was not the proper form to be advanced, and I just, I'm gonna leave it at that. And so it may not have any bearing because of the form it was adopted in. I think it's best to have this conversation further within because we have a fiduciary responsibility to all of our community, especially when engaged in potential legal action. Counselors Bita, Abel, Gutwin.
I agree with Counselor Springsteen. I have not heard any good reason why we need to address this tonight. We went through this two weeks ago, went through this whole, whole process, the whole discussion, and I don't hear anything or have not heard anything that makes it absolutely vital that we do this tonight, so I'm opposed.
Counselor Abel?
My concern is that we have this very vague addition to the agenda that says discussion and possible further action on small cell wireless facility sightings, and I don't think the folks who look at these agendas have any idea what that means. And I think without some explanation in advance, we're catching a lot of people by surprise. They don't know how to comment, what to comment on. So I just think we're trying to slide something in that should have been noticed in a more, in more specific manner, which could have been the text of the motion to go into executive session. So I, I just don't think we're doing the right thing by the public by taking this meeting elsewhere or even discussing it tonight. I agree with Ms. Springsteen and Mr. Bita.
Counselor Gutwin?
Thank you. I, I really do appreciate the frustration from, we heard from a couple of people in public comment that, you know, we discussed at our last meeting that we were gonna revisit this in April. I, I can understand why it's confusing to now find it on the agenda. My understanding is that it's to give legal advice after what happened at our last meeting. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
Okay, and so, you know, there, there's not really a way that we could have known that or what was gonna happen that night. So I do, I do understand, I do think it's confusing. I also, though, think that, you know, I, I personally do want the information from our attorneys. I want as much information about this process as we can. And I think that having, you know, none of us up here like to have executive sessions because it doesn't feel good to do the public's business behind closed doors. We've had to do this before. I think we need to limit that, but I also think that, you know, having early communication about this important issue, especially when we're talking about using public dollars, like our community's hard-earned taxpayer dollars that we're potentially talking about lawsuits, that is a big deal. So I think that we, we should at least get the information, and I just want to clarify, we cannot take action in the executive session, correct?
Correct.
So we would have to come back down here, and then, I, I don't know what the action would be, but at this time, there's no proposed, proposed action. It's just getting information.
That's right.
Correct? Okay. So I, I would, even though I do understand the concern, I do think we should, I think it's, I think it's our responsibility to get this information.
Counselor Johnson and Laber.
Well, it's actually unfortunate that I missed the meeting in which we addressed this, and it sounds to me like it was very clear that it was going to be continued in April, and then all at once, this pops up on our agenda, discussion and possible further action on small cell wireless facility sighting. The perception in the community couldn't be worse. It looks like we are devious, and it's inappropriate to go to into a, an executive session at 11:15 at night when this is on the agenda and stated in a different way. I totally object to this. I absolutely agree with Councilwoman and Councilman Bita and Springsteen. We may need legal advice, but when you're close to 11:15 and then have to come back, there's no way I can support this. And it's unfortunate that this body did not decide to do, to, to talk about 5G in a study session and frankly, allow people on all sides to give input to us. I think that, you know, this, this whole process has shown that it's a problem. I will not support going into an executive session at 11:15 at night.
Counselor Laber?
Thank you. Yeah, I was just gonna sort of piggyback on what Councilwoman Gutwin said. I think it's incumbent on us to listen to legal advice whenever it presents itself as necessary, and based on the memo and things that I've read, that appears to be the case in this situation, and based on the letters that I've also received. I think that's the case, and I think at the very least, we should be listening to our attorneys and listening to what legal advice may present itself. So I think we should at least listen to it. I know it's not gonna be the case that any action's taken on it today, but I think it's important to hear what our attorneys have to say, so I'll be supporting that.
Mr. Cox, I don't know if you want to...
Well, we, we've got two issues here. The, the fundamental part of this, which is, in, in my role and as special counsel, Mr. Felman, we have a responsibility to this body to make recommendations that we believe are in the city's best interests. That includes, but is not limited to avoiding the expense, embarrassment, and, and distraction of, of litigation. Whatever, however anybody wants to handicap the likelihood of litigation, it is a risk, and, and that's something that we feel we need to address. In the context of what happened at the last meeting and the context that we received after that from the industry, it became apparent that we needed to recommend, for reasons that we cannot address in the open session, that we need to recommend that an item be placed on the next available agenda for council to consider what we were to tell them and to take appropriate action if, if they deemed it appropriate to do that. This is not about slipping anybody, anything past anybody. The item that we're, we're following up on was not noticed on that agenda. It was an additional motion that was not the subject of any notice on the agenda. This is an item that's on the agenda and, and indicates that there will be discussion and possible action. To the extent it's been suggested that we haven't provided any good reasons to do this, that's why we need the executive session, because that's the appropriate forum to share that information. It is not in the city's best interest to sit here in an open session at 11:15 or, or any other time and disclose to the world risks, liabilities, exposures that the city might have in any given situation. That's what executive sessions are for. The second issue is that by my count, there's already more people who've indicated an intention to vote no in the executive session. We need seven affirmative votes to pass the motion that was made. I've heard that there are at least four people ready to vote against it, so if the mayor wants to go ahead and take the vote, we'll find out whether there's going to be an executive session or not.
So we have a motion and a second for executive session. Please cast your votes. Start over, please. Cast your votes. All right, Counselor Bita? And that will fail with six ayes, four nays, the nays being Abel, Bita, Springsteen, and Johnson. And so, I mean, I, I think I, I mean, I gotta do something to, I think, protect the good of our entire city, and I swore, took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Colorado and our charter, and I feel like we have violated that knowingly and willingly from this dais. And so I'm gonna make a motion to now terminate the pause effective immediately and to resume accepting and processing wireless facility sighting applications, including applications accepted prior to the pause in accordance with the time limits set forth under applicable law.
Second.
Sir, a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
I didn't have a chance to like think before you did that. Sorry.
Okay. Counselor Abel?
I get the right button in a minute. I'm concerned now that this is something really solid that we did not put on the agenda and people have no chance to respond to. The public has no way to... And I feel like I'm being asked to make a decision at the point of, at gunpoint, more or less, and I don't work that way.
I appreciate that. We had the chance to go into executive session. Counselor Springsteen?
Well, what bothers me the most is that I've been told that the industry reps got to weigh in on the changes to the ordinance, but the citizens of the city did not, and I agree with Counselor Abel. We're at the, at gunpoint yet again.
So, so I think what people are missing is the community is weighing in and has the opportunity to weigh in to mold this. This has to do with what is already in the pipeline in which the federal government and the state have rules that the city of Lakewood is knowingly going against. We are still going forth with a study or with a, with a second reading, taking in everybody's opinions and ability, but right now, there is action, and because this council refused to go into executive session to listen to that, as mayor, I cannot further my city going against the advice of legal experts, saying that this is putting us in harm's way, and I have attorneys on this board who are like, who cares? Sue us. I have a responsibility to all the citizens of Lakewood, Colorado. I took an oath. I made this motion. It is an extreme measure. This is the dire, and people talk about this looks underhanded. We look foolish. We looked foolish two weeks ago passing something that we had no business addressing that wasn't even noticed, folks. You're talking about something that wasn't even noticed was passed. I stand by my motion, and there's a second.
Counselor Franks?
I guess a difficult situation. I wanted the legal counsel because I would have had questions, so it's very difficult situation to be in to be asked to now cast a vote on... So it's very difficult situation to be in, to be asked to now cast a vote on the motion that the mayor made without benefit of legal. And so my vote, my vote will likely be no because it's reflective of not having the benefit of legal advice. That is a very, there was no, in my, my view, no harm in getting legal information. Didn't mean we had to do anything with it, but it would have allowed me to properly assess risk. I'm a project manager. Risk assessment's part of what we do. So I'm very disappointed. My vote will likely be no because I, I'm voting in a vacuum without benefit of legal information. And for that, that's, that's a shame.
I appreciate that. Counselor Gutwin?
The process of this has been a little messy, I think, at best. But my question is, you know, about the, we did, we did pass a resolution that was not noticed at our last meeting. And that, what we're talking about is we passed a moratorium, a pause, but it's a moratorium on 5G in the city of Lakewood. That was not on our agenda.
Just a couple of points of clarification. It was a motion, not a resolution. There had been no resolution prepared. It was a motion made from the, from the dais on the 10th. And just to be clear, these are not 5G applications. These are facility applications, whatever they're being used for now and in the future. But it's, it's a bit of a misnomer to call them 5G applications because that's the ultimate intent, but not what they're being put in for now.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, this is a struggle for me because I, I didn't support doing the moratorium in the first place. And the reason why, and I think it's so interesting to me because some of the people, one person that came up and gave public comment was wearing, wearing a Trump 2020 shirt and blaming our mayor for the fact that we're going to have 5G in, in the city of Lakewood. But it was our president of the United States that said, we want to win the 5G race in the world. And that, that's, that's what initiated the FCC putting these rules 100% at its absolutely effect. The FCC is the, the people that put these rules in place. And so that's why we're having this discussion, is because it is federal law and it is state law. What else is fascinating to me is that we have attorneys up here who, when we are discussing state laws that pass about traffic changes, oh, we have no, we have no choice. If we don't do this, we're going to be in violation of state law. Then we discuss 5G. Well, I'm sorry if I'm not articulating that exactly, but we are having the, a very similar conversation where we are going to be in violation of state and federal law. We are going to get, we are, we are worried about... It is so, it's just so frustrating to me that we are a city that has, we do not have money to be throwing around. We have, we are facing budget cuts. And now we are going to be facing lawsuits that we are almost certainly going to lose. And this is not based on even just our, our council's opinion. This is, if you can, if you can Google things, you are going to see that we are probably going to lose this because this is federal and state law. I'm sorry, but that's just, it's just true. So I agree that it would be great if we could get some more information. I agree that additional research is, you know, no one disagrees that it would be great if we could have additional research on these items and on, on the health impacts. That would be great. I haven't seen any conclusive evidence, any, that there is cancer risk. There's no conclusive evidence on that. So this is just, in my opinion, a waste of money to be having this conversation. And, but then, you know, we didn't have this on the agenda. So, you know, that's just, we're, this is, this is frustrating. And I'm not, at this moment, sure how I'm going to vote because, you know, I don't support the moratorium. I know it violates federal and state law. I took an oath to uphold federal law. But it's also, you know, it's frustrating that, like, this is just not the best way to do this and I, I think so.
Counselor Vincent?
I did vote no. And when I voted no, it was because I, we have constantly put staff under the gun to make decisions. And that was very obvious, I think, during the 200. And I wanted to prevent that. I was then informed of some more information and I would have changed my vote had I known that information at the time. I think what I'm more disappointed about than anything is that this council would not even let us hear information. I can't even go back to my constituents and explain that. How am I going to explain to my constituents that, oh yeah, well, we just had people say, hey, we don't want that information. It wasn't on the agenda. I have a responsibility to them. I appreciate that we had 20 people here talking about 5G. But you know what? We are elected and we are elected to represent our constituents. And guess what, folks? Sometimes we have to make ugly decisions and we can't get massive amounts of opinion on those decisions. It's our responsibility. And I have now failed my responsibility. That's all I'm going to say. We didn't even get the information. I'm sorry. I'm just appalled that we didn't even get that.
Counselor Bita Harrison?
All right. So just to be clear, tonight, the motion was to go into executive session tonight without any notice to the public and have this, have this executive session with no discussion as to what the, the reason that this has to be done immediately. I've not, I've still not heard any reason. And apparently we've known, council's known about this for two weeks. I don't have a problem going into executive session when it's done in due course with, with, with notice and the public knows about it. I don't have a problem with that then. But, but to do it tonight at 11:30 with really no notice that this was even coming up so that we have a chance to deal with it, I'm opposed to that. And if you, you know, and as far as this moratorium goes, I'll tell you right now, I'd be happy to have this discussion in a different setting, but I'm not convinced at all that this is a moratorium. What this council has done, I think, is very reasonable to simply say, hey, before we allow these other things to continue to go on, let's wait until we get our law in place so we know what we're going to do, what our rules are going to be, so that when those are addressed, that those things can be in compliance with whatever law we pass. That makes totally good sense. And I think in any court of law, I would have no problem arguing that in front of any court of law. That's just totally reasonable. And that's all we're asking to do here is give us a little time to study this ordinance, make sure we've covered all the bases, make sure we've done everything we can to protect our citizens, and then go ahead and go forward with these towers, with these infrastructure in compliance with whatever rules we, we pass. That is totally reasonable. I would have no problem. It seems to me that's a very easy case to make to any of these providers, whether it's Verizon or any of the rest of them. You know, if they can't go along with that, then I have a question of how much they really want to work with this city and how much I really want to work with them. So I think what the council did two weeks ago was eminently reasonable and it's totally defensible. And if you want to have that discussion in, in executive session, fine, but not tonight. Let's do it in due course and give the public full notice of it and then we'll go from there.
I just would like the record to reflect that although it is the practice of this council to identify executive sessions when we anticipate them coming up in advance on agendas, it is not necessary. It is an item that can be called by motion of anybody on the council at any time without any notice. The notice is provided by the description of the discussion that allows us to have an executive session if you so desire. But I just want to clear up that something we hear every once in a while is there was no notice of this executive session. And that, that's because the law allows executive session motions to happen even spontaneously without any notice required on the agenda.
And I would just say also, if council wanted to take this sort of action, which some feel they should have, what was, took place last week was not the right form. So if you think this is a protection to the city of Lakewood, it's not because it doesn't mean anything. Counselor Harrison?
Mr. Mayor, I would be proud to support your motion. And I'd like to call the question because we will be here until midnight trying to discuss this.
Is there a second on calling the question?
Second.
All right. Motion, a second to call the question. Please cast your votes.
Let's make sure we know what the question is, please. Let's reread it.
Calling the question, so are we going to vote?
And then I will reread the motion that I made. So there was a motion, a second to call the question. To call the question to end debate. There was a motion, a second. Some super majority. Okay. So that fails six, four. So really it continues. Counselor Franks.
All right. So I know we're having a lot of talk up here about, you know, what was and was not noticed. I just want to reiterate, the moratorium that we voted on was not noticed. So it's important to, and I think that might have been what we were going to be getting, you know, some information about, but just wanted to make sure the public was aware that that itself wasn't noticed. That might have brought some more folks out to discuss it. Two, I know there's been a lot of consternation about, you know, complying with federal and state law and, but, you know, at the point, this probably isn't my biggest point. I mean, obviously with marijuana, we're not in compliance as a state with federal law. So I guess that's not my, my real freak out point on that. I do want to make sure the public is aware that this really isn't the firewall. We have already permitted some of these towers to go in. I think there's some confusion that, that there would be the first one in, I just want to clarify, maybe Ms. Hodgson or someone. We already have authorized some of these towers. Is that correct? Okay. Okay.
When we're talking about the small cell towers, the shorter ones, approximately 100, either previously approved and already in place or ones that have recently been approved or approximately 100 altogether.
Okay. So that, I just wanted to make sure the public, again, this is me to get information out. And so when I look at, and Mayor Paul, could I have back your motion? Trying to figure a way through this, that it seems to me that the biggest risk, and maybe I'm not looking at it correctly, is to the already pending applications. It seems to be that if maybe we could look to carve a line between the ones that have already been submitted and, and reduce that risk, which I think is more imminent, and have it cleaved separately and still no new applications? Because I think we're close enough to the finish line on that, that, so to reiterate, 100 have already gotten their yes and they're moving forward. If we were to change this motion slightly, there'd be pending. What's the number of pending? And I think you guys sent it to me, but it's late.
Forty-five, right? Forty-five or maybe? I believe it's 44, with, with some in various stages. So some may have been approved. One thing, given the train of thought you're going down, that you might want to be aware of is under state law, we have 90, a 90-day shot clock. So should council wish to continue to accept applications, the city would have a period of time to review those applications pending council action.
So we could clarify here tonight that if we continued to accept the applications, we could give guidance that they would not be processed in any way? So then we would have that 90-day window? And we're how many days out from our April?
It's like 30 days past the April because it won't take, it won't go into effect till 30 days.
It's possible that some applications would need to be acted on before the enactment of the April 27th because there's a 30-day period after that. But it, it does give a little more flexibility.
Okay. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. Well, that's kind of the, the line I'm going down is if there is a way to mitigate that risk and, or potentially eliminate it in some areas, but mitigate that, bring, bring that one down. Certainly, I think many of us here want to ultimately end up in a place where we have the most restrictive in order to protect our communities to the best of our ability and then really help our citizens understand that there's some things that the state legislature, those are the folks you need to be sitting in front of. I mean, they've, they've done some things to us that are, that are uncomfortable. But maybe if, if somebody wants to build on that, that's, I was just kind of looking through it, saying, you know, how do we get somewhere else other than with high level of risk?
And if that's something you want to do, I'm happy to withdraw my motion. Counselor Abel?
My, when I first pushed this button, my concern was a lot of things that are being, that were being said up here are getting mighty close to revealing what we need to be in executive session to talk about. That was my concern then. It's a concern now. My other comment is that we're close to when we're going, we're not putting this off for six months. And we're not telling these folks, no way in heck, they're going to get what they want. What we're more or less saying is that we don't negotiate with a gun to our head. And I don't think any judge is going to say, oh my goodness, we're going to find city of Lakewood in contempt. We're going to shut down the city of Lakewood because they want to deliberate and come up with some decent, well-thought ideas about how to handle this situation. We're not saying these folks aren't going to get to put up their towers or their transmitters. We're saying, let's look at this more closely. Let's take some time and make sure what decision we make will be the best for our community and we'll allow these folks who are threatening to sue our community right now to do their business. I also find it very strange. We had almost nothing on the agenda about this and the mayor had a pre-written motion responding to the loss of an executive, a call for executive session. That seems strange to me. So I think in all of this, our concern for the community and the community's right to know what we're thinking about is being lost. And I also think we're too dang scared of lawsuits. We're more worried about who might sue us than about doing the right thing. And there was a fellow named Pancho Villa that said one time, it is better to die on your feet than to live on your knees. And by God, I'm not going down on my knees for the rest of my life. We're going to speak and we're going to address this in a sane way. And we have a lot of animosity that has popped up unnecessarily on this dais. People that generally don't bang the table have been banging the table. So let's all kind of back off, take a deep breath. breath, and chill out for a minute. Thank you.
I just briefly want to address the concern raised by Counselor Abel. We prepared a, a motion this afternoon based on a recommended course of action. We had copies made for everybody. It was going to be discussed. The, the concept was going to be discussed. And by the time we were done with the executive session, we were going to know whether someone was willing to bring that forward or not. So it was not something that we supplied the mayor with in case the executive session was turned out. It was part of the planned discussion for the evening and a, and a possible course of action.
If that's the case, it should have been on the agenda.
I find it ironic that everybody up here has a cellphone, just saying. Yeah, to say there's some sort of nefarious action because we have stuff ready to go in hopes that a, a council would be willing to take their legal counsel's advice, which two of the most respected people in the state, one who actually represents us and the industry dislikes, very much dislikes, because he fights the industry. And here we are. You're right, it's late. It's 11:40. And nobody up here has ever said that they don't want the strictest form of ordinance that we can have. What council doesn't realize, or is continuing not to look at, is what we have in place was leading us towards something that was more prescriptive. And we want to take it as far as we can. And that is still going to happen. But you have things that are caught in the queue right now. And, you know, this whole thing, we're not scared, that's fine. But I have a responsibility to this whole city. And I have a responsibility to listen to our legal staff inside and outside who have both made it crystal clear on certain actions that we need to take. So that's where I am at tonight. I have Counselor Johnson, Springsteen, Franks, and Gutwin.
Thank you. I think there's a lesson to learn on this, that when this first popped up on the agenda, if there was a time constraint, maybe we should have known that a little sooner and just been aware of what, what, what the playing field was like. And I'd like to know, is there not a good reason why we can't just reschedule an executive session for next Monday and have that on the agenda when we all have a chance to have more sleep and maybe cool down a little bit? I'd like to see us entertain that. Thank you.
Thank you, council. I appreciate that. And again, did everybody receive the memo that Mr. Cox put out? Did all of this council read that?
Yes.
Okay, it listed the reason why we were putting a placeholder on for this evening. Next week, we start, excuse me, excuse me.
Because why do you get to talk more than the rest of us?
Because, I'll be frank, because I'm the mayor. Okay, so, thank you. I, we start at 6:00 PM next week. And it's hard enough for people to get here at 6:00 PM. So Counselor Springsteen, you'd like the floor, you can have it.
All right. I realize you're the mayor, but I thought we all had equal say up here. To Counselor Franks' point, we're out of compliance with federal law all the time. Our whole state is out of compliance with federal law on marijuana right now. This is a manufactured emergency. This issue lingered around for months and then all of a sudden it appeared on our agenda at the busiest time during the holidays when we were trying to decide allocations. There's no, so if we look foolish, it's because we didn't know about it until it was too late to really go about this in a very good way. And it was sprung on us. And we've been fighting for a steady session and fighting to get more information and fighting to get a little more time. And it's, there's just no reason that it has to be this emergency situation. We need to have consistency in how we're regulating what we're doing. And to ask for a little more time, we're not even asking for a lot of time. Greenwood Village took six months to come up with their ordinance. But what I wanted to say is that I did ask for legal counsel last week in an email to Mr. Cox. And he produced like a four-page memo, which is privileged communication, he says, giving us all kinds of information about the questions I asked. So I did reach out for legal counsel. I did reach out for information. And I, I got that information. And so I'm taking that and weighing that and, and whether, you know, assessing the risk of what's going to happen to us if we do get sued under these scare tactics. I mean, it'll take months for a court to rule on that. And then what would it be? Like an injunction against us so we have to comply? I mean, I would hope that, that the three telecom people that the city talked to would just give us a chance. We're trying to work with you. Just give us a chance to get this right. Thanks.
Counselor Gutwin, then Franks.
Thank you. Now that I've taken a deep breath, as Counselor Abel recommended, I, I actually think that both Counselor Johnson and, and Counselor Franks offer some good possibilities here that we could move forward. So I think it sounds like one of the biggest concerns from people who didn't want to go into executive session is just about the amount of time before the notice. I still would like that information. I think that maybe we should reschedule the executive session and discuss these other options like Counselor Franks and Mayor Paul brought up, when we can have all of this noticed. At this point, I think, you know, we're, we're in the middle of this. It, it's already past the point, this isn't perfect. So I think that maybe one of the best ways through this imperfect process is if we could just get the information, we can notice it. Is there any possibility of rescheduling the executive session?
We can absolutely reschedule the executive session. I was just informed by Mr. Feldman that he will be out of town starting Sunday for three weeks. And he is the expert. So I'm wondering in my mind if we can reschedule the executive session for Friday. I'm sorry. So scheduling will be a challenge.
Okay, so on that note, then I think that the best possible outcome would be to pursue Counselor Franks' option that would hopefully mitigate some of our risk and maybe just take a five-minute recess to get that language. And we could vote on that.
Counselor Franks?
Okay, so, question. Obviously, we still have the meeting in April, which we will make our decisions. Are the pending applications, will they be required to comply? I guess I'm trying to assess, if, if what we're doing in April can't retroactively impact them, can some, I'm sorry, it is late. I am so tired.
No, I, so certainly I don't think there's retroactivity in the reverse.
We're having a lot of discussion outside the public realm here, folks, including three counselors.
Everything's okay. Thank you. I, I think Counselor Franks articulated it more, though, in that where she was going, where she was going with, is it somewhat of a moot point because what's in the pipeline is technically in the pipeline and they're not going to be subjected to what's passed. Those 45 aren't going to be subjected to what's passed retroactively. And their clock has already, so I just, I'm just going to zip it there, but, so to your line of thinking, right. And so that's why that language was to essentially give clarification to them. Yeah, so it's 11:53. We'll recess until 12 o'clock. So it's 11:53, we'll recess until 12 o'clock. Counselor Bead, do you have a comment? Or was that prior?
I do. It's now 12:08. We do not have a motion on the floor. The motion for executive session has failed. I think it's time for us to adjourn, so I hereby move for us to adjourn.
Second.
So that won't be accepted because there's a motion on the floor.
There's not a motion on the floor.
There certainly was a motion on the floor that...
Withdraw it.
I did not. I said I'd be willing to withdraw it.
Oh, I understood you to withdraw it.
Sorry, you misunderstood. Okay. So according to our charter, any regular or special city council meeting may be recessed to an executive session in manner set forth in Section 2.15 of the city's Home Rule Charter. No formal action may be taken in executive session. So what I've heard from some council members is there's this idea that we haven't had time to notice the community when this was put in as soon as possible, but now some folks would like to have a couple days' delay to have a conversation. I just don't know when it is within our charter and our rights to have this executive session. So I'm trying to find some sort of compromise and do a test to see if council would be willing to reconvene on Thursday in an executive session to discuss this conversation. And if there's a consensus at all to engage on that. Okay. Counselor Johnson.
Well, you took the words out of my mouth. I was going to ask if we couldn't reschedule this for Thursday. Yeah, I think we're all too tired.
Counselor Vincent.
Tired has nothing to do with it, but I need to know what time on Thursday because I have four meetings for this city on Thursday, so this will be the fifth meeting. So I just need to know a time so I can rearrange my entire life. Thank you.
I would propose 7:00 p.m. Counselor Goodwin.
I don't understand the practical difference of doing this because we're now giving the public like four days of notice for this meeting, and I think we had at least, I don't know how many days of notice for this being on the agenda, but I know that it was on our agenda, so 10? So this was on our agenda for 10 days, and that wasn't enough notice, but now four days is enough notice. So that just feels nonsense, ethical. However, if that is the nonsensical process that we have to go to, I will also rearrange my life and miss another night with my family to be here.
4:00 p.m. Ms. Hodson, go ahead. I can't make four.
No, I'll rearrange my appointment that I've had for two months, so I can do that. I'll be more than happy to do that.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, we're getting out of order. Counselor Abel.
I got some relevant information from the city attorney's office about the Douglas County case, the findings by the magistrate and the U.S. District Court judge. I think it would... The information came only to me. I think it should go to all of council, and I think we might find some interesting information in there as to why Douglas County's 2018 decision was acceptable to the U.S. District Court magistrate and judge. So I would request that if we do this, the attorney's office send out that same message they sent to me detailing those cases first thing tomorrow morning.
Which my understanding is it wasn't applicable to what we're talking about.
It is.
I defer to Mr. Fellman, happy to distribute the information. It was not intended to deprive anybody else. Mr. Abel requested it, and we provided it as soon as we had it. Whether it makes a difference in the final analysis, I'll defer to Mr. Fellman on that and talk to him about it between now and the session.
So if we were to set that meeting tonight, would we call for an executive session? Should we make that motion for an executive session tonight?
The necessary thing is to have a special meeting scheduled because there's not a meeting already scheduled for that day. That's what has to be done in advance. Again, the executive session can be part of that, or it can be called at the time of the meeting. For the sake of our usual practice, if you want, in the course of setting the meeting for a special meeting on that date, include the executive session as part of that.
I would prefer to have that whole motion done tonight for Thursday at 7:00 p.m.
But how do we...
Counselor Springsteen.
If some of us can't make that time, what do we do then? Because we all have different...
We sure do.
Well, we voted down the executive session tonight, is what we did, so...
Certainly did. So to some of these other folks on the dais who are trying to find a way forward and understanding the sensitivities, there is a suggestion made. We all have conflicts. I have a very important one on Thursday that I'm going to have to rearrange, and that's just part of this job. This is a very important issue to our community. So would we have to have the exact... If a motion were made, would we have to have the exact language pursuant to CRS, whatever the...
For the executive session. It would be essentially the same motion that we had tonight, and again, all the niceties of the executive session motion do not have to be on the agenda, but we typically use the motion as the basis for the agenda items. It would be essentially identical.
Counselor Franks.
All right, so to be sure I understand, so we would be noticing a special meeting, and then we would all come here, sit down, open up a special meeting, then we would go up for executive session, and then if we decided we were going to take some action, we would then come down here, reconvene, and then take the action the same night. I'm just trying to understand, because obviously we can't take any action in the executive session. So just trying to set for the public, then there'd be a public opening, we'd all go, we'd come back, and we'd either say we're going to do something or we're not going to do something. Fair?
Counselor, what we typically do, just for the sake of convenience, is if the executive session is going to be held upstairs, we notice the meeting for that room, hold the executive session there, and come down here afterwards for any action, rather than the exercise of opening the meeting here and going upstairs. We'll save a little time to do that up there and then come down here for any further action.
Counselor Abel.
To clarify, the motion would require a motion for a special meeting on Thursday, the 27th, in the city manager's conference room at time certain 7:05, 3:00 a.m. But that is the kind of thing, that is how the motion should be styled.
Right, and as we were just discussing, part of the motion could be to notice the special meeting for that date and time for the purpose of holding an executive session, for the purpose of receiving attorney-client privileged information, as is on the motion tonight. That could be part of the notice for the special meeting.
And I have that wording here. There is at least one person who can't make it Thursday. Is there a date when we can all make it? Friday?
Ms. Hodson.
Can I just shepherd this a little bit? Because I agree, it sounds as if 7:00 o'clock on Thursday doesn't work for everyone. It might be helpful to kind of test that a little bit. So does Thursday work? Is there another time on Thursday after 4:00 that would work for everyone? Is Thursday out of the question? Can people meet on Thursday? Yeah, can we have hands? Who can meet on Thursday? How much daytime, Counselor? What about 4:00? 4:00 p.m.? Does 4:00 p.m. qualify as during the day, too?
Then we run into people who are working full-time.
Right.
Who can't get off then, who have appointments that are set up. I can do 7:00.
And we do Friday.
Friday doesn't work for the legal. And Mr. Fellman leaves on Sunday, Mr. Cox leaves on Friday.
Wednesday doesn't work?
Does Wednesday work? Can I test that, Mayor?
They have screening committee.
What time is screening committee? Is it 5:00?
Yeah. We start meeting at 5:30, and the actual interviews start at 6:00.
Okay, let me just test that. On Wednesday, is there any way to meet at 4:30 on Wednesday? May I please see hands? You're in...
What about Tuesday, tomorrow night?
Well, it is Tuesday. You mean today? Yeah, we need a 24-hour notice for that.
Is there any way that we're going to have to go with a majority? It sounds like Thursday's the best, except for... Oh, sorry. Except for one person, and I'm sorry, but I think if we try to do it this week, that looks like about the best time.
Okay, let's test that again. So if we can just see hands and see how many we can get, Thursday at 4:00. Can you count? Thursday at 4:00, can you please just show a hand? One, two, three, can't make it. Thursday at 5:00. If you can make it, can we see hands, please? Thursday at 5:00. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Not you, Mayor. So, there are two can't. Thursday at 6:00 p.m. One, two, three, four. Two can't make it. Thursday at 7:00. Counselor Bida, Thursday at 7:00?
What about screening? I thought we were doing screening.
Thursday. Your... Wednesday's screening. We're talking Thursday. Screening...
Thursday is screening on Thursday?
It's Wednesday.
It's on Wednesday.
All right, then, I'm fine.
So, we can get 10 of you Thursday at 7:00 p.m. Counselor Springsteen, does later than that work? Does 8:00 p.m. work for you by any chance? So, the closest we can get is 10 people can attend Thursday at 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, less folks can attend, are available. And today's Tuesday, so it's not enough time to notice.
I will withdraw my motion. Somebody withdraw the second.
I withdraw the second.
Somebody want to make a motion for Thursday at 7:00?
Mayor, I move we call a special meeting of Lakewood City Council Thursday, February 27th at 7:00 p.m. in the city manager's conference room on the second floor of this building.
I second.
Mr. Cox, didn't you suggest I read the motion for executive session in on this?
That'd be ideal.
Okay. Following those words... Dot, dot, dot. And I move that on that... On Thursday, the 27th, shortly after 7:00 p.m., city council go into... Enter into an executive session pursuant to Section 2.15, Pren C, Pren 4 of the Lakewood Home Rule Charter and Section 24-6-402, Pren 4, Pren B of the Colorado Revised Statutes for the purposes of discussing matters of attorney-client privilege with the city attorney and the city's special counsel regarding possible action on new and pending wireless facility permit applications. I further move that we return to an open session from the executive session for the purpose of taking any necessary action.
I second a second time. How's that?
That's four.
All right. We have a motion and a second to set a special meeting. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, please cast your votes. That passes. Eight ayes, two nays, the nays being Bida and Springsteen. Thursday at 7:00. Hard to say. He's broken.
What does that mean?
He broke his... Yeah.
Oh, no.
Yeah. Does anybody want to have updates or... Okay. Is there anything? All right. So, we'll adjourn at 12:25 a.m. Thanks.